Could you ask Nadia Holliver to come in?
I'm sorry.
Nadia Holliver, can you ask her to come in?
I'm ready.
Yeah. Let me see this.
Not quite. No. Oh, there she is. Never mind. Here she comes.
Maria, it's okay.
Yeah, she's in the back. I guess Pedro took off. Pedro Gonzalez.
Did you see him at the food place?
No.
No. He is one of the candidates, yeah.
So we're going to move the city selection committee?
I don't think we're gonna move the whole thing or just oral communications for those two who are here. Yeah.
Well, you want to just move it the whole time and I'm just not about it.
But that pushes back all these other things too.
Just move out oral communication.
Why don't we just let those two speak on the oral communications?
Did I make a decision?
No, they make the decision. Why don't we do that? Are we on?
We're on.
Okay. Welcome back to the continuation of the meeting. The crowd is much smaller. And so what we've been during the break, there are a couple of elected officials here who are being considered for countywide positions. And so what we thought we might do is to move the oral communications, number one, before the updates. They will have an opportunity to say a few things that wouldn't have to stay for the whole meeting because we don't have it really on the decisions until the end of the agenda. So is that agreeable to all the council members?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we have council members here who are running for various offices who'd like to introduce themselves to us in the context of that interest of theirs. So there's first Helen Fiscairo from Colma.
This is the TV spot.
Okay. So first of all, you did a great party for Seppi, so I want to congratulate you on that. But I'm here, Seppi, as you know, her positions that she has been on are hard shoes to fill. And I'm interested in the Transportation Authority seat that she has vacated. Thirteen months ago, I ran against her and only lost by one vote. So I'd like your reconsideration for that vote since she has vacated the position. And I have sent two letters, which I hope you have received, expressing my experience. I've been on Colma City Council for nineteen years and have served on many countywide committees, some that I'm no longer on because they turn out, such as the Hip Housing Board of Directors. I sit on the HCDC Committee. I serve with Cliff on the RENA Committee and many others that are mentioned in that letter, those letters. And so I'm hoping that the Brisbane City Council will consider supporting me and giving me their vote this Friday evening at the Council of Cities Dinner. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Nadia Holliver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of council. I'm Vice Mayor Nadia Holliver from the City of Melbourne. I'm here today because I'm interested in the LAPCO position. I'm here to very respectfully ask for your vote. I can tell you a little about my background. I have been Chair of the Council of Cities. I've also served on various transportation boards, but it's a congestion relief alliance, as well as currently I'm on the Congestion Management and Environmental Quality Board here in the county. Statewide, I am on the Environmental Policy Quality Policy Committee of the League of Cities. I have also served before on LAPCO. The only reason I ever stepped down was because in Melbourne we have terminates. When I was terminated out, I needed to give up my position, just as Seppi Richardson now needs to give up hers. So I'm interested in resuming my service. While I was on LAPCO, which was about three years, I did service Chair. We began at that time the Service Reviews where we looked at the special districts and we had suggestions as to how to do things better and also saw that some were running very, very efficiently. And we never had any, you know, authority to ask a council, I mean, a district to disband or anything like that. But we offered suggestions. Some were taken well, some not so well. But I found it very, very meaningful. So I'm here tonight to again ask for your support. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Excellent. So we will be discussing that whole set of issues because there are quite a few seats and lots of candidates near the end of the meeting. And then other oral communications, I have one slip from Karen Cunningham.
See you, Helen. See you, Nadia.
All right. See you.
Hi, Sandy.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm here to talk about kitty cats. One more time. This situation I know is been before you on several meetings and several discussions. I'd like to put it forefront that hopefully we can ask Dr. Redica from Nine Lives Foundations to either speak in our communications if we can't put it on the agenda for a conversation with the City Council for the meeting of March 18th relative to how she has a program within her organization to reduce the feral cat population in the communities within San Mateo County. She's doing an excellent job. I hope you will give her a spot. I think she only needs five or 10 minutes to talk to you. And I have been in conversation with her since our last communication relative to this in oral communications about the numbers relative to how to reduce the population of feral cats in a community with the traps, bay, neuter program, and then release, and what that actually means to a community relative to reducing the feral cat population. Firsthand, I know this problem. I live on the east side of Tulare Street and I have got animals that are dumped on me all the time. And for somebody to dump an animal and leave it for me to deal with is very difficult. I already have a very busy, busy life, but I'm taking on this additional burden. So if we can, you know, get something in the coffers that they are sanctioning or some other group is sanctioning, I will be the volunteer from a community perspective to help facilitate whatever we do. You know, I've given one cage for trapping and people just need to know what to do. Having the people of Brisbane feeding the feral cats because they think it's a, you know, oh, my gosh, we've got all these, these cats that are really hungry and we need to feed them is really not the answer. It's a horrible problem that they're propagating and I hope that we can educate the population of Brisbane and bring down this feral cat population through education and a program, whatever program that the city intends to adopt. But I think Dr. Redica is a really great resource, whether you love what she does or you don't. And I've said this before, if we just send the cats that we catch off to, you know, any of the other foundations in San Mateo County, right now they are so overwhelmed, these animals are coming in and they're being put down right away. So if, which is horrible, really sad, but if so, if we can get the population down, that whole problem actually becomes much less of a burden for a community. So I will be a volunteer to help with the problem, help with the solution, I should say, not help with the problem. And if we can put Dr. Redica either on the agenda or let her come speak, you know, with her information in the second meeting in March.
How do you spell it?
R U D I G E R, Nine Lives Foundation. She's the veterinary person there. She's the top vet at that clinic. She would love to come and she's already got it on her agenda that she will come speak and hopefully we can get something together. And as a citizen of Brisbane, I will volunteer to help with the situation.
Help educate us, huh?
Well, whatever, whatever it takes. I mean, people are putting out bags of food thinking they're doing the right thing. They're thinking, oh, my gosh, we've got all these hungry animals. And they're putting out bags of cat food. Actually, that is about as horrible a situation as you could imagine because it's not feeding the cats. Well, it is, but it's feeding our feral everything else. We've got, you know, the coyotes, we've got the biggest raccoons you've ever seen. I think I mentioned on several occasions, there's a raccoon that comes on my deck that's the size of Labrador, huge problem. So we need to stop people doing that some way or another. So whatever it is relative to education, reducing the population, I would be, you know, willing as a citizen volunteer to be part of that. And Dr. Redica is a great person to come at least, you know, have you, you know, hear her out. And I did say after my last conversation with you that we need numbers on, you know, what do the numbers mean? If you're doing a program like this, what does it mean? What does it mean? You know, how is this reducing the population relative to a community, which of course is the right way to go? So if you would grant us this audience for a formal presentation, great. Otherwise, I guess at some point she'll come to our communications.
Have you given the information of contact to the city clerk?
Yes, I actually talked to Sherry today, but I just wanted to
Okay.
Make sure that we were all on the same page and just really let you know that she is, you know, very willing to, you know, be part of a solution to a problem. And she has the knowledge and how she does what she does really does work. So if we can do that because, you know, the other agencies, if you take a kitty there, they're gone within a few hours. Thanks so much. Good night.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, so now we go back to updates and we have two updates. And the first has to do with our environmental impact report legal person. And I think John Swickie will start off and then Hal Topper will weigh in and then we'll hear from the person herself.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce and have her speak this evening, a key member of the city's planning team for the Baylands Environmental Impact Report Review Process. That'd be outside legal counsel Margaret Sahagi. Ms. Sahagi is well qualified and esteemed in her Sequa knowledge and I think she can get into some of her experience over the years. I've had the opportunity to work with Margaret on and off for probably more years than either of us might care to admit at this point, but on some very challenging projects in the past. And I think the Sequa, her Sequa specialization would be a very valuable asset as, you know, staff and to the council as this project plays out over time. And with that, I'd turn it over to Hal.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a word about Margaret's legal relationship to the city. She is the city's special counsel, just as we've used special counsel in other areas. And she brings to this process an expertise in Sequa that is vitally needed for the Baylands EIR, which was the specific project for which her services were retained. Even though UPC will be billed for her time, she is the city's attorney and she, you know, is working under the auspices of the city attorney's office as well as directly with the planning department. The only point I wanted to make tonight is that there is the same attorney-client privilege that Margaret has with the city as I do and other attorneys who are employed by the city as their attorneys. So she's here tonight to introduce herself, to fill you in a little bit on her qualifications. What she is not here tonight to do is to talk specifics about the work she has done because that's all attorney-client privilege. I'm sure she'd be happy to provide you with, you know, more detailed memos or even, even meetings, you know, offline. But in terms of your questions tonight, if you're getting into the specifics of what her work has been, I think we'd rather do that in the form of a written report if you feel you need that additional information. But there is the same attorney-client privilege, so Margaret is a little bit constrained in terms of what she can talk about in the context of a public meeting. So with that, I will turn it over to Margaret.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the City Council. Thank you for letting me take a few minutes to introduce myself to you tonight. I do look forward to working with you as the city moves through the Brisbane Baylands process and your consideration of that matter. I have been working on an on-call basis with the city since about, let's say, 2010 on various issues that have come up. I started as a city planner, grew up in Palo Alto, worked for various cities, went back to law school and decided I was going to stay on that side of the counter and just work for public agencies. So I have a law firm with about 10 attorneys and we represent public agencies, cities, counties, water districts and the like throughout the state of California on Sequa and land use issues. My love is working with your staff and staffs throughout the state to make sure they comply with Sequa and other land use regulations. I'm happy to litigate when it gets to that point, but I have a real emphasis in my practice on that preventative approach. My attorneys, most part, all have other specialties. I have an engineer, a biologist on staff, an air quality attorney on staff, and I bring that planning expertise. I'm sure John must have taught me some important lessons some 20 or 30 years ago about planning. I do a lot of teaching on Sequa. You heard talk about, of course, the League of California Cities, so I do a lot of work with the planners and the city attorneys there. I teach at USC and UCLA. I'm down there and have to deal with the crosstown rivalries in appropriate ways there. I also teach the judges. I don't know if you're aware of their world, but they go to Judicial College for their updates and they are required to take an introductory class on Sequa as well as hopefully annual updates. The state is set up so there are assigned Sequa attorneys in your county and they are required to go to our classes, so I have the honor of teaching the judges along with Justice Roby, who's the Court of Appeal, and two other practitioners, which is really quite insightful because it gives you a sense of how the courts review various matters. But the day-to-day fun things are, and you may consider this a strange sense of fun, general plan updates, specific plans, complex projects. We just finished the Chula Vista Bayfront Master Plan, which was a multi-jurisdictional and coastal commission 10-year project with received unanimous support from the Coastal Commission. So I'm here to work with your staff and assist you in any way that you need legally. I look forward to, I look forward to working with you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, well, I got a question. How'd you get unanimous decision from the Coastal Commission?
That was, they refer to it as a love fest. That was 10 years of consensus building between members of the community and that was the City of Chula Vista and the Port of San Diego and a lot of work with the Coastal Commission.
Yeah, because I would think that would be very difficult to kind of get them on board with, you know, a development in, you know, the environmental issues that would be involved along the coast.
They said they thought it might have been the first time.
Really?
Yeah.
Good for you.
I won't take all the credit for that. I think it was a long process with a lot of policymakers.
All right. And how much, I mean, you're involved in so many different things. How often do I see you up here in Brisbane?
Whenever you need me. I've made that commitment to your city. It's, that's what I do. Whenever I'm called, I'll be here.
All right. Thank you, Margaret.
Sounds like a song.
But I don't sing and you never want me to.
Was that James Taylor?
We call it Simon's.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say I'm pleased that you are here and, you know, presenting yourself and that you've been helping us out along here. And I'm sure that Hal is appreciative since he's on his retirement boat.
Still at the dock.
Still at the dock, yeah.
In Alabama.
I have no idea. Alabama.
But one of the things you discover if you're around on a council for a while is that it becomes extremely important that you do your work that's fully legally defensible. And I think we all understand that and we need, you know, your help and others in making sure that what we do in the Baylands, which is very big and very complex and very controversial, you know, is as legally correct as we can possibly make it.
You have a good staff. They make my job easy.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We have the pleasure of Bob Maynard's presence again, who's going to give us an update on what's going on with the mosquito abatement district. And we did get your reports. I guess you want to go through that and give us some background?
Yes, I would. Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, I'm Bob Maynard. I'm your appointed trustee to the San Mateo County Mosquito Abatement District. I met with the technician for North County in December. He described Brisbane as being mellow, whatever that means. I, he noted that there were only 12 service calls through November and I don't know what that means. Maybe people do not know that the district is providing services. That concerns me. The calls were split evenly between mosquitoes, other insects, and yellow jackets. But in addition to service calls, the district has done hundreds of checks and treatments on fish ponds, fountains, pools, catch basins, vaults, ditches, impressions and tanks. He showed me the list and it was about this thick. In addition to mosquitoes, the district and yellow jackets, the district is also giving advice on dealing with other vermin rats in particular when people's houses are being infested. We don't actually do the work, but we do have a checklist to evaluate the situation and to give advice as to what a person can do to get rid of the rats. And we will also give them a list of companies in the county who do the work. We will not advise them as to who to go to. We also do the same thing with wildlife. If your attic gets invaded with raccoons or something like that. The district is going to conduct a surveillance of thick populations and disease in six county parks, including San Bruno Mountain. If you see people walking on the trails, they're carrying poles with white cloths, cloths attached to them, they're collecting ticks, not surrendering. The district is conducting a mosquito survey of eight county cemeteries. You can imagine where a number of those are located. Those are all those vases that people put there, collect water and mosquitoes. There was mention earlier of feral cats down in Southern California. Cats and opossums with fleas have been found to carry typhus and some human cases have been, have occurred. So that's something to think about as far as dealing with the feral cat situation. The audit for the last fiscal year and an internal audit for the first six months of this year are expected to be completed in March. The district is in excellent financial situation right now. A HR consulting firm has been retained at a modest cost to assist with normal HR functions that had been previously done by the finance officer. So now it's, we're sure it's meant to be done right.
Yeah, you got an update on any of that? You have an update on any of that, Bob, about what happened with the finance people or do they get convicted?
It's in court right now.
Yeah.
And we're anxiously awaiting the results of that ourselves. It's been a long, long
Process.
Process. Our garage and workshops, which are more than 40 years old, are being earthquake proofed right now. That's our major winter project. The cash balances on our balance sheets match those of the county, so we're pretty assured that our financial statements are in good shape. And that's about it. This is the love season for us. We're going to spray Mills Field by helicopter, which would have cost us $50,000. But the Fish and Wildlife Service broke some dykes open for us and saved us the cost. This is the time of year that we start having problems with salt marsh mosquitoes. Did you have any questions about the district report or anything else about the district?
You know, I just wanted to say that, you know, I had someone come by my house and got the little
Box?
Yeah, there's like a little plug, like the black plug, and they tossed it in the pond and
Oh, yes.
The guy was very friendly and he said he'd come back in a couple of months, toss another one in.
Oh, a mosquito?
A mosquito, yeah.
In the mosquito district, yes.
Yeah. So, yeah, so that was, that was nice to know that they're out there doing their job.
Is bleach work? Bleach? None unless you want to kill everything else.
Yeah.
Oh, bleach would work. That would get rid of your mosquito problem.
Right. Thought it would. I mean, I'm not suggesting in the Koi Pond, but, you know, basically a
Static.
A static pond that doesn't have
No fish pond.
Yeah. I was interested in, you know, the part of the report about ticks because, you know, the district is mosquito abatement and yet you do a lot of work related to ticks, which are also potentially dangerous.
Yes.
Some people are thinking about Lyme disease.
Yes.
And so I was wondering, have there been any cases of Lyme disease in San Mateo County?
Just one or two. Most of the cases have been in Marin County and further north. Mendocino's overrun with them. But we're concerned because it's so close to us. And there are other diseases passed along by ticks that we have had more cases of in San Mateo County. So we're paying close attention.
And what does the, your department do on a personal level if someone's noticing ticks in their omaria?
We will come over and see if there's an infestation in the area. We'll go over to their backyard and with our white cloth, piece of flannel cloth and wipe through their brush if they're complaining that they have a lot of ticks and see if they have a lot of ticks and give them some advice as to what they might do to
So that's an advice type of thing, not a treatment?
Yes. We would not, not treat the tick situation. Otherwise, we'd be going from backyard to backyard all over the county and we don't have the resources to do that. brush if they're complaining that they have a lot of ticks, and see if they have a lot of ticks, and give them some advice as to what they might do to...
So that's an advice type of thing, not a treatment?
Yes, we would not, not treat the tick situation. Otherwise, we'd be going from backyard to backyard all over the county, and we don't have the resources to do that.
Is that a special cloth, or is it just...
It's just white flannel.
White flannel.
You can see the ticks on the white background, and the flannel easily picks it up from the brush.
So the flannel pulls them, actually pulls them off? It's not like you're jumping on and saying, "Yay, look at that!"
Yes.
A dog!
Exactly.
Yeah, you know, last year, our dog had a ton of ticks, more so than any other year. And, I mean, I found a couple on myself, my youngest daughter, she had one on her face woke up one morning, "Hey, what's this on my face?" It was, you know, one of those dog ticks.
Yes, dog ticks.
But the dog ticks...
Dog ticks.
Yeah, and those dog ticks are big, as opposed to the Lyme disease ones, which are the deer ticks, which are very small.
Yes.
So we don't have any of the Lyme disease type ticks on San Bruno Mountain.
That's correct.
That's correct, okay.
Carrying Lyme disease.
Yes. But what about deer ticks on San Bruno Mountain, because we don't have deer, right? Aren't they associated together?
We have deer ticks in the area.
We do have some on San Bruno?
Yes, yes.
Interesting.
We have deer, so we have deer ticks.
Well, I, well, I know, like, say, like skyline, you know, over, you know, like swinging ridge in that area, but not here on San Bruno Mountain.
That's correct.
But the deer ticks still survive on San Bruno Mountain, because there used to be deer a long time ago?
No, I don't know about San Bruno Mountain.
Okay.
I know where, whether there are deer, there are deer ticks. I don't, I haven't seen a deer on San Bruno Mountain.
No, no.
For quite a while.
Yes.
For quite a while.
And, and when you're, when you're going up on San Bruno Mountain and looking for ticks, what do you do when you find them? Is this to see if they're carrying a disease, or...
We have, have a laboratory at the district, and we have the ability to dissect the ticks, put them over, under a microscope, you know, and look at what microorganisms they're carrying, like rickettsia, which is, including Rocky Mountain spotted fever, which are extremely rare here in California, but it's possible. But all types of other disease, diseases carried by ticks.
But you're not doing tick control?
No, we do not.
Yeah.
All you can do is, is warn people that when they see that typical bullseye mark on themselves, that they've gotten Lyme disease.
Yeah.
And that they'd better get antibiotics.
I know some, some people are more susceptible than others.
Yes.
You know, some people, ticks don't, don't attract it, you know, it's kind of weird. But I walk by the same place, man, one person the tick, another person that just, what it is, chemicals.
Yeah.
And we're...
They're creepy.
We're concerned by Asian tiger mosquitoes making a comeback in the area. Some, 20 years ago, there were some that came in a ship, in a shipment of bamboo to the Bay Area, and they were contained. But now in Southern California, they've had a similar problem, and so we're paying attention to that. On San Bruno Mountain, we also pay attention to plague, because the rodents are carriers, and they're, and it's endemic. So we do pay attention to lots of different...
Haunter virus.
That, that too.
Very good. So if there's anything we ought to really be concerned about and let our residents know about, you'll let us know, right?
Yes.
Great. Appreciate your service. End of report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, so, excuse me, the next is the consent calendar, and I would like to remove A and C. Page one of item B. Your second?
My second.
A, on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was the minutes of February 4th. Reason that I pulled January 14th minutes, you have in front of you actually, I made this, this here.
Oh, yeah.
It's page five of the minutes, and I just thought that we should have a statement about, or review of what I said about what was the nature of the impasse on the council regarding the appointment process. Neither of the two minutes made any mention of that, and so I thought that really needed to be specified, so, since this is the summary of what I said, but that appropriate. And then, of course, we added the effective resignation date up the top there. Those are just the two changes I recommend. With a period at your approval.
With the period at the end, right?
End of the sentence needs a period, okay. Okay. In red, of course. Any other changes to those minutes?
Nope.
Could I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Okay. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now, on number C, this is the reimbursement agreement for 200 Anis, and I wanted to just ask the Public Works Director, there was an interesting conversation of options that we could take in terms of the length of period.
Yes, sir.
That would be appropriate for this reimbursement agreement. And the agreement that has been signed by the applicants is for 20 years, but the staff report says, you know, it might be better to be 10, and, but I would appreciate just some statement about, or arguments for and against 10 versus 20 years, and then your recommendation so that it's clear what we're passing.
Sure, sir, happy to do that. So the reason that I included 10 in there is that we are about half and half right now on the reimbursement agreements. We have had some, some done for 10 years, we have had some done for 20. Unfortunately, this is not an issue that's codified, so we don't have direction in the municipal code. These agreements happen, we're not the only city, I believe, in the state that does them, but primarily we do them because of the way our infrastructure is built out, and that infrastructure is built out on what are presently substandard roads in many cases, either the geometry of them or the width of them. And so when one party comes along and is required to do a major improvement, what we did when we first started doing these was look at, well, what would be fair? And the way we analyze fairness is to say that if not for the development that this party has done, and if the other party across the street had come in and proposed a similar application, had submitted a similar application, in other words, they did something that increased the value of their home 50 percent, or increased the square footage of it 50 percent, they would have had to do the very same thing. So it struck us that for some period of time, that adjoining property which has benefited from this major improvement ought to pay their pro rate a fair share if they were to submit an application, because it didn't strike us as being terribly equitable that one party could come in, the first one to come in and develop, say, an empty lot in this case, and then the party across the street, as soon as it's finished, could come in and do their improvements and not have to pay anything. But over the years, as I mentioned, we have a couple of the agreements that are 10 years, we have a couple that are 20. Normally, when I present them to the applicants, the party who's done the work in this case, in fact, Mrs. Zavodnik is one of the beneficiaries of it, at 200 Anis, the owner there, along with her husband, we always put it up as 10 years, and they specifically requested that we change it to 20 years, so we changed it to 20 in the agreement. But of course, that's for council's final consideration here, and I didn't want to presume that you were, that you were going to take 10 or 20. I'm sort of agnostic as to which one makes more sense, I don't have any objections to 20, but I suppose I don't have any objections to 10 either, so I'd certainly, you know, if you'd like, you'd certainly, yeah, I'm sorry, I can't give you a better answer than that, just because we don't know when things are going to develop, when things are going to happen. I, I won't speak for Lena, but I think she would say that she would rather have the 20-year sense of comfort there, it just gives her a longer time. I think frankly, regardless of what term we put in there, we're not putting any greater burden on those benefiting properties that we've identified in there than existed prior to their home being built, and to that roadway being nicely winded, widened, and to that roadway being dedicated in fee to the city. So I don't particularly see it as a burden to them, but I'll defer to council's wisdom on that, and I don't know, maybe you might want to inquire of the city attorney as well, or ask Mrs. Zavodnik directly.
Again, there's no legal requirement, and so it's really up to council discretion whether you want to go 10 or 20. So I don't, you know, think we have a particular recommendation on that. There is one other point, though, that Mayor Miller would raise that I would like to address, and that is, in the legal description, right at the end of it, there's a reference to the map attached here too. And normally, when we do any document to be recorded, we take the legal description of what they already have, and we try to have it exactly the same. In this case, however, I think whoever did this legal description kind of screwed it up on that last paragraph, and what it really should say is that part of Anis Road, instead of "as shown on the map attached here too," because it's referring back to the same map that was referenced earlier, so it simply say lying northerly to southern prolongation of the most southerly boundary line of parcel B, as shown on parcel map filed, whatever. So we'll go ahead and make that change, but I just want to let you know that I think your point was well taken, that implies there's a map attached, which there isn't and probably wasn't on the document to which this was attached in the first place. As far as the time, I think that's just a matter of council discretion. You know, as Randy has said, it really doesn't change the financial impact, it just increases the opportunity of the applicant to, you know, get reimbursed.
Yeah, and the reason I raised it is just that it wasn't entirely clear what was being recommended, so I just wanted to be sure that when we passed it, we knew exactly what we were passing.
Understood, yes, sir.
Yeah. So the 20 years is okay with you, then?
Yes, sir, absolutely, the 20 years is fine with me, and I think that gives the Zavodniks opportunity to perhaps fill their children's college fund if something happens, 20 years from that time, they're family with young children, so...
Okay, I appreciate all those responses. Any other comments, questions?
I, I do have a question, and I asked council about this earlier, and this agreement follows the property owner, not the, or the property, not the property owner. But also what has, have the adjacent properties owners been notified of this? They don't have to sign on to it, I'm assuming, there's, as they sign, they're...
No, they're not parties to the agreement.
They're implicated just by their property location.
Yeah, if they come in and they are, would have been required to make the same improvement, then they would be required to make this reimbursement, but they're not parties to the agreement. We may be dealing with totally different people in terms of whoever may have to make that payment. And it runs with the land, because if people sell and move on, we can't possibly keep track of, of who would be entitled to the reimbursement. So the assumption is if you sell your property, as I explained, and you know there might be some reimbursement coming to you at a later date, that that would be factored into the sale price, and you can say to your buyer, well, you may get this chunk of cash, so, and you may not, so there ought to be some additional value on the sale price to recognize that possibility.
And if, if an adjacent property owner, or one of the ones affected by this agreement, go in to do a title search on their property, are they going to see anything?
No, because this will be a title search on this property, but my understanding is we typically make a notation on the city zone maps of those properties that would be subject to this arrangement, so if they came in and checked the city records, you know, they would know, or if they check with the planning, if they're planning on doing a development, they probably would start with the planning department. I think the planning department does keep a record of these agreements, and if you look on a map, you would see the properties adjacent to it that would be subject to the reimbursement. And at that point, they would, they would be made aware of that obligation.
But, but on the whole, if, if I were looking at an adjacent property to purchase, let's say, and walked up and said, "Oh, the road's already here, this should be a good place to, you know, to be able to do a development," I wouldn't necessarily know, or a future property owner wouldn't necessarily know until they start doing research on that property at the city level to even find out that this income is there.
They wouldn't know when they buy it, and if they're not doing anything to the property, then they'd never have an obligation to make a payment. So this only kicks in if someone is improving their property, or doing a tear down and building a new house, for which they would need permits from the city anyway. We wouldn't want to record and notice another property, because that suggests that there's a lien on the properties, which there really isn't. It could be very easily misunderstood by someone as saying, "Well, you have, you have an obligation to pay money to your neighbor." Well, you really don't unless you want to do something to your property, and at that point, you should be inquiring of the city as to what those requirements are in the first place.
And it's not a good legal precedent to notify these property, the current property owners of this prior to enacting this, or have we spoken to those property owners?
Typically, we have, we have not given formal notice, they might be aware of it, but no, we have not on any of the prior agreements notified neighboring properties.
I just know that if, I would assume, you know, 10 years down the road, that you saw that street that's been widened there, that you wouldn't necessarily think that there would be an additional fee that was going to be due for you to remodel or increase your home size, and I, that worries me, that people wouldn't know that it's there. I mean, at first, they might, and somebody who's there while you were doing construction, or the property owner was doing construction, may know that, but, I mean, in theory, I think it's a good idea to do this, to recoup some of the costs of, of a development or a remodel. I just worry that people, memories can be short and not see a potential large cost which has been borne by the prior development.
So if I may piggyback on that, so that means that on the usual disclosures that you would get when you look into buying a property, this potential liability would not show up?
Not as to the property being purchased, because it's not a liability at that point.
Well, that's why I said it's a potential liability.
Well, I guess I would respond by saying, if, if I wanted to build, tear down what's there and build a new house, or do a substantial expansion, my record wouldn't necessarily show all the other costs that have to be paid to the city, it wouldn't show building permit fees, it wouldn't show possibly there's a construction tax some cities have. There are all sorts of costs associated with development that are not recorded on the property, because it's not being developed, so I would say that's part of the due diligence that the property owner next door would have to go through if they had a plan to develop their property. And my guess is that this fee is probably one of the lesser amounts that they'd have to pay to go through that development. So there are a whole series of different costs that are not a matter of record. Well, on your title, they are a matter of record in terms of the city's records, right?
Well, we could send out a notice, if the council approves this, we can send a notice to these two particular property owners, letting them know what the council has decided. There's, there's no issue with that, just so that they're aware of it.
Well, let's ask, is there?
There's no legal issue, there's, I guess, the risk of somebody getting that notice and not understanding what it means, and thinking that they're being assessed for the street cost when they're really not being assessed for the street cost. I mean, my own feeling would be there's, there's probably more risk of misunderstanding than the informative value of the notice.
Yeah, they'll freak out.
Well, you're going to get a notice saying, you know, "If you develop, you're going to have to pay X dollars," and I think most people will miss the first part of that sentence and just focus on the X dollars, think they're being assessed for that amount of money, like a street assessment, this is really not a street assessment.
But this is public information.
Oh, sure.
So, I mean, I hear where you're coming from, but to me, that, that would make me feel comfortable if these people, these property owners were just, had the information that what the council had passed. that what the council had passed, and just leave it at that. And if they want to contact the planning department to get further clarification, then, then they could. But you're right about the due diligence for future buyer of those properties.
Yes, sir. Do you want to say anything, Clay? No? Okay, please, introduce yourself. Come up to the mic, please.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Alina Zavodnik. I'm the owner of the property in question.
Okay.
My question to your point about sending out these notices is, since the requirement exists today about widening the road, so prior to us widening the road for our project, this requirement was in effect at that time, and I guess I'm just wondering, we wouldn't, or I guess the city didn't send this notice to the property owners at the time, saying, by the way, if you decide to do something, you would need to widen this road. So I guess my question is, why would we? I have not
Yeah, no, I understand where you're coming from.
I'm trying to clarify.
No, for sure. To me, I don't really see it as a notice. I just think it's just information that's being provided to these two, you know, you could call it a notice or whatever. But you're right, I mean, they, if they wanted to develop their properties, they'd go to the planning department. The planning department would give them the information that they would need. Here, you are doing it. You're a little bit farther down the road than they are.
Oh, they're already
They've already got the road, haven't they?
Yes. So, I mean, they are, they will be benefiting from the work that you'll be doing. And if they don't do anything to their property,
Correct.
There's no, no money out of pocket. I just think that it's just, yeah, everyone knows what, what's happening. And then that's what it is. That's what I'm asking. It's just, everyone knows why you're doing this. You're, you're putting up the money. No money is coming from them. If they want to develop their property later on down the road, within the next 20 years, they'd have to pony up.
Yeah, there's, there's a trigger mechanism in that, too. If they wanted to just upgrade their home, but if, that wouldn't trigger it.
No, no, to a certain level, you're
And this particular case, you know, generally, I don't know, I'm kind of ready to go with what Hall is saying, because, you know, I have a belief that people misread something when it comes from the city, that it's official, and you have dollar signs attached, and it pertains to their property, they're going to freak out.
And then, and then what would they do?
They'd call the staff.
Okay, and then what would the staff do?
Give them an answer.
Give them an answer, and they go, okay, thank you, thank you for the clarification. Right? Instead of, you know, later on down the line, hey, I never heard, what's going on here? You know, I just, better just get it out of the way and be done with it, and then the city's already done. But, I mean, the city doesn't even have to do that, but at least they made a good thing.
Yeah, I don't know if they put it in the newsletter, but, you know, sending out particular letters kind of, I don't know, is a two-way spot on it, but, you know. I'm okay with doing it, but it, you know, it's just, it's good to communicate, but, but at the same token, it might be, you know, pretty much more burden on staff to, you know, how much time are you going to do it? And if you've ever dealt with people that are so angry they can't see the trees through the forest, or the forest through the trees, right, you know what I mean? That they're not going to get it, and that's happened before. And so, you know, there's, there's kind of a balancing act you got to do if you're going to send something out.
Yeah, and I'm sure staff would come up with something that hopefully wouldn't freak them out, and if it does, it does, you know. But I think better to put it out there now than, than
Put that up in the letter, please don't freak out.
Yeah, right, right.
Or something to that effect.
And, you know, and I'm also fine with 20 years. Yeah, I mean, uh,
You don't mean to harm you, but
Maybe, maybe this is informational only, there's, you know, some kind of need at the
Right. Yeah, I think I'm comfortable with that, too. It seems appropriate to inform people that, you know, something could happen to them in the future if they do such and so and so and so. I think it's just fair to do, unless there's some kind of legal reason not to do so.
Sir, if I could offer some, just reference on, on what's happened since 2004, and, and taking into account that I think there's, there's probably three possible times when people are going to freak out, if we can just use that term. We were talking about songs, is that a Rick James song? I don't really think it was. But, so, it must be, I'm sorry, it's all the sugar from the party, I'm getting
I think he did that. Is that all he's
It was not Rick James. I'm not going to try and sing, I'm, I'm much worse at margaret. But certainly, when they get the letter, I think the opportunity is going to happen. Certainly, if somebody goes to do a 50% or greater improvement, they're going to find out that's going to happen. And certainly, if they go to sell the property, that's going to happen. Now, in the ones of these that we've done since 2004, I've only had one of those, and that's when a benefiting property was being sold, and the parties came in. In that case, frankly, the concern was, was, had a greater opportunity, and I understood it better than I think I, than I would understand the concern in this case, because normally, when we do these, the applicant, or the property who's done the initial development, puts in a request for the reimbursement agreement very early. So oftentimes, they put that in before they've even finished their construction. And so there's usually two of these reimbursement agreements. There's the first one that says, once they figure out all the costs, and the city certifies it, then we'll do an amendment that tells about the dollar amount. And in the case I'm discussing now, that happened a number of years ago, the property across the street was being sold prior to the final construction cost being determined. So while that property and their realtor understood that there was a possible obligation, they didn't know what the cost was. They knew the percentage of it, so that was very disturbing. In, in this case, the Zavonics have already completed the project, the costs have already been certified, so whenever this happens, whenever this information is brought up to a party, when it's triggered and comes to their attention, they're going to find it. It's going to, and they are going to know a number. In fact, the numbers are already specified in the reimbursement agreement. So while, certainly, people, you can understand somebody's concern. I'm, I'm sure the Zavonics were very concerned when they discovered, hey, I bought this property, I got to build a house, and now I got to spend over $100,000 to a road. Everybody has those concerns when we, when we have assessments and things that we're required to do. It's just a question of, when's the most reasonable time to do that, and how many times do you, and how close do you want that opportunity to be, for people to be concerned, and for staff, and for the council themselves, because you'll be asked as well, saying, why did you do that? To be a swash, and where do you want to spend your time doing that?
Thank you, Andy.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, could I suggest that we, you know, go ahead and pass the reimbursement agreement as proposed, and, you know, take care of that, and then maybe ask the staff to think a little bit more about this public information process, because we want to do something that, you know, consistent across the board, but, and fair, and at the right time, and maybe a little more thought from New York Park, and coming back with something that we could, you know, because there are all these different kinds of circumstances. And what may be appropriate in this circumstance obviously doesn't fit in other circumstances, so.
Okay.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah. And I'll make a motion to approve the reimbursement agreement with the language adjustment in the last paragraph of the legal description.
Right. And the 20 years.
The 20 years.
Duration. Second? We're not voting yet. Does anyone second it?
No.
No? Not yet?
No.
Okay.
I can add a half second for that one. That doesn't count.
I, I just had a question on, it does say that the 10 and 20-year approval, to not approve it is going, is not consistent with what we've done in the past. But what, on these other three instances, what were the timeframes on those, and have they come into, have, has there been any ramifications to the property owners that were unforeseen for their, getting their, have they been enacted on these agreements?
So, I'll take that, Hal. So 10, 20, and 20, on the previous ones that have been done, and the only one that any action has moved forward on is the situation I was describing earlier, where a property across the street was being sold. And that property eventually did transfer.
And, and was the agreement enacted because they did a remodel?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, ma'am. The agreement was not enacted yet. They haven't, the property's sold, but they haven't submitted an application to build on it yet.
Okay, so none of these have, have resulted in an application where someone's gotten money back from that agreement?
That's correct, ma'am. That has not yet happened.
Thank you. That's the only questions I had.
I had one other thing. Just in the second paragraph in the parcel two, there was the typo. Did you catch that sewer pipe? Second sentence says, and replacement of the sanitary sewer pipe, it's spelled F-E-W-R-R. This is on the legal description.
Mm-hmm.
Parcel two, second line, middle of the second sentence.
Do I have a second now?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
So now we have a public hearing on the, on the bag issue, and I guess we have first the staff report.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, good evening. Once again, this was a really interesting project to work on, and it was interesting for a number of reasons. One of them is because certainly, you'll note in there that San Mateo County completed a programmatic EIR on the project, and all except for two of the cities in San Mateo County were participating agencies in that programmatic EIR, and there were also a number of cities from outside of the county. And the end result of this, from the county's perspective, is that they are willing to enforce this and handle the management of it and such. So it was really far-reaching. And the other piece of it was, that was interesting to me at least, was the breadth of staff that's been involved in it for more than a year now. Lisa Pontecarvo with the Open Space and Ecology Committee was very involved, working with San Mateo County Environmental Health. Myself and the planning director, John Swickie, were involved in reviewing a programmatic EIR. I was involved from my role as our NITD's program manager, excuse me, in dealing with the municipal regional permit. And of course, the city attorney was involved in the many steps as we, as we went forward on this. So, interesting, exciting, starting to be on the forefront of things. Really, the point of this reusable bag ordinance is to encourage us, the retail customers, to consider how we're doing our shopping, excuse me, and to, and to use recyclable or reusable bags when we do our shopping. And the way it does that is it generally prohibits most retail businesses, except for some exceptions, which I'll talk to in a moment, from giving us free single-use bags. It actually requires them to charge us for that. And the businesses that it excludes from that are, if you're using a bag that doesn't have handles on it, and say you're picking up meat, say you're going to our local butcher, and you, you need a pound and a half of New York strip, well, that can go into a plastic bag that doesn't have handles, and there's no charge required there. So pretty much anytime you're doing prepared food, that's an exception. Garment bags are also exempt, because we haven't figured out a way yet to get a recyclable or reusable bag for all of the shirts and all of the suits that we drop off at the dry cleaner. Restaurants or businesses that receive 90% of the revenue from the sale of prepared foods are also exempt. And there are some other exemptions in the staff report that you'll see in there. People that are charitable reuse organizations, people that are using food stamps and such, those people are also not charged. So this evening, what we're going to ask you to do is we're going to ask you to, number one, independently make the SEQA findings that are necessary and that are required by SEQA. And you'll find those findings in this staff report, and you will also find them embedded in section three of the ordinance, as I was discussing with Mayor Miller earlier today. There are a couple of ways you can do this. One of the ways you can make your findings is the resolution. You can also make them within the ordinance during its first introduction and in consultation with the city attorney. The city attorney thought that, that that was fine, and that was a reasonable way to do it. So that's, if you're looking for a reso, it's in the ordinance, it's in section three of the ordinance, it's found there. And the other thing we're going to ask you to do is to introduce the ordinance at its first reading. The reason we're recommending this ordinance and leading it the way it is, notwithstanding the fact that there are some other items that could be considered, the polystyrene type bans could be considered and such, is that the programmatic EIR that San Mateo County did was limited strictly to the single-use bags. So that's what the reusable bag ban went after. So the programmatic EIR work has been done for that. That EIR has been certified by the, by the primary responsible agency. You can now piggyback on top of that as a participating agency and make your own independent SEQA findings. But if you wanted to change it, really even very much at all, you would most likely have to go back and do your own environmental impact report to study it. So there may be other things that we want to talk about. I know that Mr. Peterson from San Mateo County Environmental Health did come up and talk with the Open Space and Ecology Committee. He was very well received. You'll see that there are also a couple of other letters of support in there, and the California Grocers Association, San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board supports it. I know that when I spoke to Mitch Bull with the Chamber of Commerce, it seems like a year ago now, and inquired as to whether his members were going to have any concerns, the answer was, no, we're not. So a lot of people are in support of it. So that's why staff is really recommending to you that, that if you want to do this reusable bag ordinance, that you adopt this as it is. And if there are other things that you would like staff to do, to work on, please tell us to do that on an independent track, and we'll be happy to take it on. So with that, I'd be happy to take questions, or, sir, if you'd like, public hearings, your meeting.
So, any other questions of staff?
You know, I, I do. So, Mr. Mayor. So Randy, the garment bag.
Yes, sir.
So if I go to Sears and I buy a pair of pants, and they put it in a bag, is that considered a garment bag, or is that?
It's a garment bag.
That would be a garment bag. All right. So then, just kind of looking at, you know, the bags that they're targeting, it's mostly going to the grocery store?
Yes, it actually is.
The Grocery Association, or what was that?
California Grocers Association, CCA.
California Grocers, okay. So they, they're in favor of doing this?
They're in favor of it, and I imagine that's for a couple of reasons. Number one, they really are in favor of it being a unified approach. It's, they don't have to have one store in Brisbane, and one store in San Bruno, and one store in Millbrae, all three doing something different, because each municipality is open its own very specific. And the other is that, other than the burden of having to track the bags they sell, that's really the only burden placed upon the retailer, because the retailer, we're not telling the retailer, hey, you've got to give them these recyclable bags. We're telling them, you can't give them this single-use plastic bag, but, and if they don't bring their own, you can sell them a recyclable bag if it meets the standards for recyclable. You can sell them a reusable bag if you go to, let's pick a place like Trader Joe's. If you go into Trader Joe's, you see all the bags up on the wall available for sale and the price, and you can buy one.
That's right. And they, you know, I mean, I, I guess there is that burden of tracking it, but you barcode it in, and, you know, it's just part of your sales, and it doesn't sound like it's very difficult to do.
Yes, sir.
And it's 10 cents for the first year, right?
Right, through December 24th, 2014.
I'm sure. And then the, the retailer keeps the money. They don't have to turn that money in?
That's correct. That's correct. It's her money.
Okay, so that covers their, their costs. So which, right now, they're paying for it, but I guess all of us are paying for it, and
Certainly, that cost is embedded somewhere. Yes, sir. In this case, though, we're just, what this ordinance does is it makes that cost very obvious to the consumer with the intent of trying to shift their mindset, so that you remember to stick a couple of bags in the back of your car and bring them in when you go to the grocery store.
Yeah, okay. So I think that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Jerry?
I don't have any questions for staff. I have a comment when, after we hear the public
Public hearing? Yep. Clark?
I have a, I have a lot of concerns I'd like to talk about on this.
Okay. Probably do that after the public hearing?
Absolutely. You can do it after the public hearing.
I have just one question at this point.
Sir.
On page five, I guess, of the proposed ordinance, it talks about the fines are as set out in the Brisbane Municipal Code.
Yes, sir.
What are those fines?
I'll look to the city attorney, sir.
It would be an interaction offense, so it's $100 for the first offense, $200 for the second offense, within a certain, six months, and three, it goes up. It's a, it's a normal infraction.
Okay, so it's kind of the typical
Yeah.
Fines structure. Okay.
And that's sort of really one of the few things, there are a couple of variances that we have in there, but because the, our municipal code already specifies fines for individual offenses, and we've, we've put that in there. So it's, our offenses are the same for different types of offenses throughout the city.
Okay. All right. Okay, so I guess in terms of the process here, we should hold a public hearing, and after that, then we have council discussion. Okay, so we'll open the public hearing, if anybody would like to speak. Carol? Carol?
I did not read through the ordinance. I have a couple of questions. So the little pull-down bags that people put in their assorted vegetables and stuff, that is not covered. Is that correct? Okay. So what about the farmer's market? How is that going to be dealt with? Because are those little baggies going to be, people are going to be charged 10 cents for, or are those going to be free? Is that covered at all there? I mean, there's many, many farmer's markets now.
Okay. What's the answer to that? Good question.
So if it's a protective plastic or paper bag without handles for meat, fresh produce, prepared food, prescription medication, which we don't sell at the farmer's market, it would be exempt. But that doesn't prevent you from bringing a recyclable bag. In fact, if you get a recyclable bag in those little carts that fold out, my wife's got a really cute red one, you can, you can put all of that stuff right in there.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, Mitch Bull, Chamber of Commerce. We really don't have a big retail problem with this in Brisbane. I mean, Midtown is probably the only vendor who will be impacted at this level. And my only comment would be, if we enact this, we give them 180 days to go through their supplier bags and give them enough time to not be, you know, penalized. But again, since they would be passing costs on to the consumers, you know, the penalty's not on them unless they decide not to pass the costs, and then they would be fined. So that's really, you know, but if we give them time to get rid of the stock and then go to a, you know, a reusable bag or something, that, you know, would be better. But other than that, I don't see anything, you know, really against the ordinance that could be a problem. I mean, other cities are already, are already doing it.
Interesting. Obviously, Midtown is the most clearly affected in our situation. What about the hardware store?
Ah, but it's not a food, it's not a single-use food bag.
I live in a city which has an ordinance like that, and I go into Orchard Hardware, and it applies.
It does apply.
Or fries.
So it's 10 cents.
Well, you just don't take a bag.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
So it would affect Brisbane Hardware?
Yeah.
Yeah. If they're using plastic bags.
Yeah, well, they usually don't, but, but, I mean, it could affect them. So the most likely...
I'd love to address that in the council discussion.
Okay.
I've got a lot to say about that.
Okay, all right. Congrats. Does it apply? And I guess the answer is mostly it applies to Midtown Market.
Midtown Market would be, you know, your number one.
In terms of our situation, for the time being.
For the time being.
Yeah.
It does apply to the hardware store.
But, you know, it does.
It does apply to them, yeah.
But as far as number of bags, probably Midtown goes through more bags than Hardware.
Yeah. You know, you think about it, there's Juilli's, and...
That's...
You know? And they have some.
Yeah, small little stores, maybe they...
It affects everybody with a handled bag for...
Yeah. It cuts on clothes.
Right.
And then, of course, some of the food items in the takeaway.
Okay.
I think clothes are affected also. It's just garment bags that are used to protect, but we can, we can do that in...
Yeah. Okay, so the, did the chamber board actually discuss this, or?
We did.
We did?
We did.
All right.
Yeah, we, we had a subcommittee look at it.
Did you actually have a conversation with the owner of Midtown Market?
I have talked to him.
Okay.
And, and he said, well, you know, he's going to do whatever the law says he has to do.
Uh-huh. Okay. So he wasn't...
Didn't seem very...
Just out of shape or anything?
No.
Yeah. Okay. That's good. Thank you.
Motion closed by the committee.
Yeah, I don't see anyone else who's likely to be...
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So I have a question before we have the council discussion, and this goes back to some of the things that Randy was saying. In the recommendation here, it kind of talks about doing the SEQA findings as a separate And I just want to be assured that, and it does also say in the material from the county that you need to do everything pretty much the same way, or there might be some kind of legal issue. So I just want the assurance from the city attorney that, by incorporating the findings into the ordinance, which is a little bit different in the way it's recommended by the county, that we're not getting too far off of the agreed-upon track among all the cities in the county.
I don't think we are. I think their concern about uniformity was using the same language, not necessarily the document in which it appears. I think when Randy and I were talking about this, we felt it was better to actually include it in the ordinance, because the resolution can become separated from the ordinance, and probably is in terms of record-keeping. Whereas if somebody is looking at this ordinance, there's usually a recital in most ordinances that this is exempt from SEQA, for example, or there's a negative declaration, or whatever it is. We felt this actually did a better job of keeping the SEQA basis for this ordinance connected to the ordinance itself. Whereas if you looked at the ordinance and you didn't know there was a separate resolution out there, you'd have to go searching for it, or you may not even know it exists. So we actually think it's more informative to put it right in the ordinance, which tells people, there was an environmental review, it's a county-wide review, and if you're interested in it, you know, here's where you go to get the additional information. So I don't think they have a problem with, with how we've positioned it. I think they would have a problem if we wanted to go around and change the language.
Okay. So then, just in terms of process, if we decide to go ahead this evening, then we would just, you know, introduce the ordinance, and that, in effect, would also introduce the findings on SEQA.
Correct.
Okay. So I just want to make that clear in my mind, anyway. Okay, council discussion. Clark, you seen if you're ready to go?
I'm ready to go. First, I just want to make the statement that getting rid of plastic, I think we can all agree that it's probably a good idea. And after that statement, I'm going to disembark from that, because I thought about this, you know, quite a bit, you know, just how it pertains to Brisbane, and reading probably what the intent is. California Grocers Association, who's affiliated with large corporations, Walmart, Target, Safeway, Lucky, all those people that have government relations, people who focus specifically on this stuff. And then you're like, what's it do for the mom and pop shops? They don't know. Probably, right? Thinking, they probably don't know a whole lot about this. Now, I talked today, I think, how many businesses in Brisbane does this actually pertain to? The hardware store, I thought about it. Midtown Market, Julie's Liquors, Carol's Meats. Maybe, maybe one other business, right? So I took it upon myself to go talk to the owners, and asked them if they're aware that the city council is looking at introducing an ordinance that's going to ban plastic bags. Oh, no, not really. We heard, you know, this is probably coming, you know, everybody's doing it, there's a trend. Said, "If you thought about how you're going to deal with it..." Well, we'll just have to do whatever. Most, the response is most, I said, "Well, let's, let's talk about that a little bit. I'd like to know, you know, about your business." I talked with, first, Billy Del Charo in the hardware. I said, "So you use plastic bags?" He goes, "Yeah, we have plastic bags, and we use paper bags." I said, "So if you get rid of the plastic bags?" He goes, "Yeah, the garbage man said they don't like them." You know, and, but that's where he's hearing from. And a few customers said, "Oh, you know, just get rid of the plastic bags." I said, "Are you aware that you have to charge, that you're going to have to charge for paper bags?" "No, I didn't know that." You know? And, "Yeah, you'll have to charge 10 cents." And they started saying, "Well, you know, how does, when a customer comes in, you know, like, you know, referred to Orchard Supply Hardware, Lowe's, Home Depot, you go in there to get some screws, you get a box of screws, it's barcoded. You don't get loose things. Our hardware store is defined for Brisbane. They have things in there that, that are unique. They have loose screws and stuff like that." Says, "How do you, how do you get screws? How does a customer get screws?" You know, and stuff like that. Says, "Well, you get these bags, you put them in a bag, and then they mark it. Plastic bag. It's not for drugs, it's not for food."
And no handle. It's exempt.
Is it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And, "Well, what if they didn't want to use a plastic bag? Well, they got small bags."
Those are exempt also.
Are they?
Yes.
Does it say?
Yes.
That a small bag is exempt?
They are used for, for taking things to the counter, to check them out, and to keep things, small items.
Looking for that in the ordinance, and I, I wasn't, it wasn't really clear to me on how, how that functions, you know? And then I asked them, "Well, you know, what do you do when, you know, a customer wants all the stuff in the world? We put it in a bag, usually, everything." So this is going to have an effect on them, basically. But they're not sure what the effect is. And so then I went and talked to Julie, who does the majority of her business, is food takeout, majority. Now, in the ordinance, it's 90%. So what if somebody comes in and buys food, you know, and they want a six-pack of Coke? You know what I mean? It doesn't, this is, this is where it's flawed. And this ordinance is really going to be hurting our main core business, four businesses on Main Street. It's really going to create a way for them, without them understanding it yet. Because remember, all these large corporations that all these other cities have, Oshkosh, Home Depot, Walmart, Target, none of those stores are in Brisbane. And our outreach sucks. We have not talked to any of our business owners. And I'm sorry, Mitch, but we haven't talked to Carol's Meats, we haven't talked to Julie's, we haven't talked to the hardware store. Because I asked them that. And I think before we enact something, that the responsible thing for us, now, we're talking about sending a letter to somebody, you know, and this is going, may affect your property or not, this is going to affect these people, and I think that we need to reach out to them and figure this out before we enact the ordinance. That's the responsible thing to do. And have we done things like this as a city, where we come up with these disposable bags or reusable bags? This is a town of coma, got from our colleagues in coma, which you can carry around in your pocket, and it's very useful. I have numerous bags, reusable bags.
Right.
But I don't know what the effect is going to be, reading this ordinance, I don't know what the effect is going to be on, on our businesses here in town. And I don't think they understand what the effect is. If I don't understand it, I don't want to pass something I don't understand, unless I really know in complete detail that they really understand it. And I understand it, too, because they're the ones that impact. Because you know how Brisbane is? I'm not paying 25 cents for that. Screw you. I'm not shopping here no more. You know what I mean? And it gets like that, it gets combative, you know? Been around long enough, you know how it works. So I suggest we do a better outreach with our businesses, those particular businesses, before we enact an ordinance. And we haven't done that. And I think maybe this is something we should put in a budget of giving to our citizens, because it's going to be an educational thing. It's a process. And to me, the way we do this ordinance, the way it's described, it's draconian. We're latching on to what the county does. Take, for example, disposable diapers. Now, does a disposable diaper have more impact than a landfill than a plastic bag? I would say probably yes. If people go to Midtown, or Target, or whatever, and they buy a paper bag for 25 cents or 10 cents, and put 100 disposable diapers in there, what's going to have more impact, that bag or the 100 disposable diapers at the end? Is disposable diapers next? This next on the list? I mean, yeah, I mean, we've created this quandary in the last 50 years, society, okay? Now we're going after plastic bags, and so it's trying to re-educate how we're going to do things. Disposable diapers, I know for a fact, in one Pacific island about the size, a little bit smaller than San Francisco, ecosystem, the marine biologists were baffled that a certain fish that the natives had relied on started disappearing. And they couldn't figure it out. They were thinking, well, you know, maybe they're getting eaten, or, you know, toxins going into, going into the system. And it took a local, who happened to have some extraordinary diving skills, dove down, went down into a barrier reef, and found the whole thing covered with disposable diapers of where the breeding ground was of this certain fish. And it was killing it, because people were flushing it, they didn't have the sewer systems here, you know, that, like, like we do, sewer treatment plants, this stuff would just go out into the ocean. And these disposable diapers covered the bottom of the ocean like a, a plastic tarp that screwed up the whole ecosystem. They had to clean it out in order for the fish to be able to come back. But I'm just saying, that's, that's an example of something that really has an impact. I mean, everything that we do, Ray, I mean, you're as an economist, we, we talk about, you know, externalities, and life cycle costs, and everything like that. So coming back to it, for us, as a city council, I think we need to work with these businesses specifically to see what the impact is going to be, and how we're going to help them get over this bridge to where it's seamless for their business. And I think that's the responsible thing to do, to reach out to them and work with them. And how we're going to do that, I'm not sure. But I'm not ready to pass an ordinance to say, "You're going to do it come April 22nd, hell or high water." So let's give them the tools first. Let's not just do it, and then say, "That'll be that." I think that's irresponsible. And I don't think this council's that way, so.
If I may, I have a question. When, is there a certain timeframe to implement the ordinance, or we can adopt it, but we can implement it at our choosing?
You could certainly choose a later implementation date. You don't have to choose it on Earth Day. And the way we've written the ordinance is a little bit beyond Earth Day to begin with. And when the county did it, that struck them as an idea that latched on to them, that, that felt right. Staff also recognized that we were getting this to you later than they were getting it.
They had a lot to absorb it.
Their supervisors, right, getting it through Open Space, and, and coming around and getting it to here. So that was exactly what our thought process was, that we ought to bump it out further so that we could have more time, once it's going to be implemented, to actually work with the local retailers.
Sure. And it kind of addresses Mitch's, you know, concern about having inventory brought down so that they're not stuck with these bags if they can't get out. Because, because they can't give away, once this is implemented, the plastic bags cannot be sold. You have to use a recyclable type of bag.
Or given away.
Or, yeah. But you can't use the typical petroleum-type plastic bag anymore. Those are banned?
That's correct.
Okay. So there we give an opportunity for, you know, the merchants that would be affected to reduce their inventory, then get to that certain point where now it's not a burden on our merchants anymore, it's just, we're trying to get the community to bring their own bag, or if you don't, you're going to have to, to spend the dime up until a certain on our merchants anymore. It's just, we're trying to get the community to bring their own bag, or if you don't, you're going to have to spend a dime up until a certain amount, a certain date, and then 25 cents after that. And that all the bags eventually that will, you know, we're hoping that will be in the system will be eco-friendly. I mean, that's the ultimate goal, you know, trying to, you know, undo some of the, you know, all the problems that we've caused over the last, more than 50 years, or the last century. So, you know, just the disposable type of mentality of our economy.
And sir, if I can follow on to that. So for reference for what the county did, the county adopted their ordinance back in October and made it effective in April. So they basically gave their retailers six months to go through their inventory of existing single-use plastic bags.
Okay.
I think it would be helpful, you know, Clark gave examples, a number of examples of different kinds of bags and different kinds of combinations of things that people could buy. And there were some statements made, "Well, that's exempt," or maybe that is or is not exempt. Could you clarify all of that so we know what this is going to be applied to and what it would not be applied to?
Sure. So what it's really trying to do is prevent the use of the protective bags that have the handles. So the bags without the handles, and the way the ordinance is written, specifically for meat, fresh produce, prepared food, the prescription medication, which is a moot point for us, those items are exempt. So if, in the example, if you were taking something out of Julie's Deli that was prepared food, it could certainly be put in a plastic bag. I don't know if there's a quandary there as to whether you could also put a Coke in that bag and have it not count. I don't know that that issue's been raised or been dealt with. If you were obtaining something at Carol's Meat counter, for instance, that could be put in a plastic bag. It would be a bag without handles, very similar to what you'd get at any of the big stores that Councilmember Conway mentioned, where you rip off the bag when you're putting your veggies or something in there, and you put those items in to separate them out from the rest of your groceries. I think the conversation about other single-use bags within the hardware store, I do not believe that those would be exempt, because they are not carrying products that are listed as being exempt. So in that case, Billy's would have to either, would have to offer recyclable bags at a fee, the specified fee over a certain time period, or the customer could bring in their own bags in those cases.
Even for bags like this?
That's my understanding, yes, sir. That does not count. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I like to really understand the language, because it doesn't, it's not clear to me.
Oh, all right. Get it clarified.
So I'm sorry, sir, I've got, my colleague here is commenting on the order and, where So page three of 11 in the staff report. So let me read from the ordinance, the way it's written, is that "A recycled paper bag is a paper bag provided at the check stand, cash register, point of sale, other point of departure, for the purpose of transporting food or merchandise out of the establishment."
Can you cite the?
I'm sorry, sir. So I'm in the ordinance, I am on page three of the ordinance. And the ordinance is Attachment A in the staff report. I'm on page three of that, so that's in definitions, it's 817020. It's the second one from the top of the page on page three. And I do apologize that I don't have a county expert here tonight. They had two people available, and they're both at another city council meeting. So we are left a little shorthanded here.
Hey, Clark, this is, I mean, Billy is using the recyclable.
Oh, I know. Yeah, which you charge for.
Eventually, he would, right? But I mean, you know, every, if you went to Lowe's, they'd be charging, or any place in South City, or any place in coma, any place in San Francisco, so I mean.
Everything is packaged in there, though. You can walk out with a package of screws.
You can walk out with a bag, I mean, a box of screws. You are right about that.
Right, yeah. And that's what I'm saying, that's what the difference is between Lowe's and Brisbane Hardware. Brisbane Hardware, you got a lot of loose stuff to where you put things in there.
This is true, but then at Billy's, you can buy 10 screws, and you'd be hard pressed to be able to, you know, and spend whatever, 35 cents for the 10 screws. Whereas you go to Lowe's, you're going to have to spend, you know, $4 to buy 100 screws when you only need 10. So I'd rather spend a dime.
Well, I'm.
I'd just throw that out there. I mean, you know, there's pros and cons to everything.
Well, I, I hear that, but I'm not ready to pass tonight.
I know, yeah, no, no.
Until we do a reach-out and really understand this, because I don't like to do it. I don't.
Well, here's the thing, right? Like, the county had, you know, reviewed this thing and said, "Okay, we're going to do it in October," with the implementation date of April. So they had six months. We're getting it, and if we decided to do Earth Day, we're looking at two months. And so that's definitely not enough time. You're right. You know, maybe the six-month, you know, window is appropriate, just like the county had to let our merchants riddle down their inventory and to provide the information outreach that, you know, is necessary.
I'm not saying this is not useful. I said that at the beginning.
No, no.
I want to be clear on it, that, what is the impact? You know what I mean? Because Brisbane, really, in the county, Samataill, has been an environmental leader. We were the first ones with the green building ordinance. I mean, we're not latching on to CCAG's Climate Action Plan, because we think it's unrealistic, and we're not taking any money for it. And I'll talk a little bit about that later on my CCAG update. But I mean, we're doing things that are above and beyond, that are cutting edge. And this isn't what I term as cutting edge, that a lot of cities are about as environmental as a gas in a jar. You know what I mean? And they pass this and thinking, "Yeah, you know, this is..." You know what I mean? Is for our local businesses, we need to really understand the impact for them and our citizens and how this is going to work. And we're talking for businesses. We're not talking Target, Safeway. I mean, this is not the majority users, okay? I'd even like to know, you know, because we're talking about Julie's, and here, the way I read it, is 90 percent. Is a merchant going to have to prove that they have 90 percent? Are they going to have to turn over their books to a county health inspector to say, "See, 90 percent of my sales are food, so I'm exempt?" Or, "I'm only seeing 88 here," or whatever, you know what I mean? Is this is.
You have a good point.
It's goofy.
Okay, could I offer something? Perhaps what we could do is invite the county staff that's been involved with this to come up and do a workshops with our local, with our local businesses. And we address all the concerns that might, they might have, and so that we understand how this would work and how it would be implemented, and then bring this back to the council.
Yeah, you know, one of the things that Clark brings up is, you know, what is the, I mean, I'm assuming this is more of a good faith effort on the part of the merchant to, you know, when someone comes to the store and they don't bring their bags, that they do charge for the bag instead of just giving it away? I mean, you know, and it probably, you know, if you started giving away bags, you'd get busted because there's going to be a lot of witnesses that you're doing that, right? You know, I mean, I see, well, here's the thing, I mean, so when you have a situation where your, some product is exempt and some product is not, how do they, based upon the information you've received, how do they resolve that issue?
Well, sir, I don't believe that they're going to set up sting operations on plastic bags. And I'm not trying to belittle anybody's concerns, because I think it's important that the council and the impacted retail businesses really understand this. But my understanding is that this is mostly going to be driven on a complaint basis, and it's primarily put in there as a mechanism so that if we do have businesses that are just blatantly refusing to comply, that we have a mechanism to ensure that they do comply. I don't think they're trying to hurt anyone. And of course, one of the advantages is that if it ever got to the point, if we do pass this ordinance, and if the council decided that they were not pleased with the enforcement services that you were getting from Samataill County Health, you could always change the ordinance, change the municipal code.
Yeah, I think Clay's point of bringing, a recommendation of bringing the county person before us is good.
And sir, if I could, and I'm sorry, I was just receiving late-breaking news from my colleague at Samataill County. I asked him specifically, "Are small paper and plastic bags such as used in a hardware store to get loose fasteners exempt?" And his response was, "Yes, they are exempt, they are considered protective bags." So the small ones. I misspoke, Mr. Miller, when you held up those smallies hardware bags. I was suggesting they were not, and John was correct, according to the county health expert.
So where does that address that in the ordinance?
I'm not going to be able to get a text answer that fast, sir, but let me look, I'll see if I can.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at it, I, you know, read through it, and I'm not, it's just not clear for me.
I had found it earlier when I read it through the other night. I was lucky enough to listen in to the Open Space and Ecology Committee meeting when the county came and explained the bag ordinance to them, and went over the reasonings why they were trying to do a county-wide rollout and to be consistent in the entire region. That's what would be fair and be competitive for all the grocers and vendors in the county. When I was elected to the city council, the first thing my husband asked me was, "When are you going to get rid of those damn plastic bags? When are you going to do that?" And I was really excited to see this come before us. And I thought it'd been delayed a little bit, it had been coming in other areas, there are signs up in every business that you go into in South San Francisco saying, "Did you bring your bags?" Starting April 1st or April 23rd, you're going to be paying for your bags. And they are doing reach-out. I'm not quite sure, there's two cities that didn't sign on because they have absolutely no retail. And other than that, it's going to be us. And I get so tired of driving down the freeway or walking down the street and seeing the plastic bags in the trees, and the plastic bags in the gutters, and seeing them floating in the bay. And I think this is the most proactive thing that we could do, and I would like to, I would like to see it passed as soon as possible. If outreach is going to be what it takes to get it passed, and some education to the residents, I think I would go along with that. I would be very disappointed, though. I'd like to see it passed tonight, because I feel very strongly about it, that it's a good thing. And like I said, I had a little bit more information. I'm very sad that the county couldn't be here, because I think that was promised to us, that they would be here to explain it to us and walk us through the implications. And I am very disappointed that that failed to happen. And I'm very glad that I got to hear the explanation to the OSEC committee. And so while I'm no expert on its ramifications, I did get a lot of information on what's exempt and what's not. So that's my soapbox.
Yeah, you know, I'm glad, I mean, I agree with you. I mean, I'd like to see it get implemented sooner than later, though I do want, I think it is only fair for our merchants to reduce their inventory, as far as, you know, getting the notice up and running. I, you know, people, right, you go to, you can't shop, you really can't shop in Brisbane to get all the things you need. You got to go out, and so you're being exposed in these other towns, like South City going to Trader Joe's. And you see that they're, okay, yeah, this thing is coming. I think people are aware of that, we're trying to do the right thing and eliminate the plastic bags. You know, like, in the United States, I mean, at least we do a decent job of collecting our garbage, but you go to the world countries, like Mexico, and that's what you see, just in big, just ugly globs are these paper ba, I mean, these plastic bags.
Plastic bottles are even worse.
Yeah, but, you know, it's just, you know, I agree with Terry. I think, I think we can remedy those concerns that you have, Clark, and get this thing implemented sooner than later.
If that's the direction that we're going to go, then I'm going to vote no. Not because I feel that it's not a good thing, I do believe it is. But I think it's irresponsible for the council to not reach out to those small businesses. I mean, we're talking Trader Joe's.
Yeah, no, I don't think we need to do it tonight.
You don't get to talk to Trader Joe.
You know, I don't.
You talk to Julie, you talk to Billy, you talk to Mike, you know, those, you know what I'm saying? This is, this is a small town.
If I can't speak to the mayor, to have this thing implemented by Earth Day, when does the city need to make a decision on passing this, to have it be part of the Brisbane Municipal Code?
After the council's second reading, right? The implementation is 30 days after the second reading?
And we can't bring the second reading back for how many days, hell?
Well, you can, we've done second readings in, over longer periods of time. The state law is that the minimum for effective is 30 days, not the second reading. Now, this is set up for 90 days effective. We've had situations where we've introduced an ordinance, and there's been a whole lot of other conversations, brought back a lot later than that for second reading and adoption. The minimum state law for the interim between the two is five days, actually. You can't adopt an ordinance within five days after its introduction. I don't think there's a maximum limit.
I think you were talking about quickness, not long.
Yeah, you know, what I'd like to be able to do is provide an opportunity for you to address your concerns, Clark, and have you vote yes. Because I think it would be nice for the city council to vote unanimously on this. But I definitely want to address, you know, have an opportunity to address your concerns.
And that's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, and so.
To address it, to, with our businesses, to help them and help our citizens. I mean, to me, if we just pass it, it's like, okay, this is what you're going to do. You know, like I said, these are small mom-and-pop shops. We're not talking about the biggies that, you know, all these other cities have. And that's what this ordinance is really targeting, is, yeah, it's plastic bags, but these are big places that do volume, volume, volume. We don't have that here. Don't have that amount of volume. I mean, we're a.
No, for sure, but we all got to do it for share.
And here it says that, oh, we don't want to, you know, do we want to perceive ourselves to be out on an island? Well, we are on an island as a city anyway. You know what I mean? We've been that way forever. You know, it's just, you know, so I'm a little bit sensitive with this. And what I'm asking you guys is that we do an outreach, and we do our part, too. We make something like this, we make a budgetary item. We pass stuff out like this to our citizens. We don't sit back and pass ordinances and say, "Well, go to Trader Joe's and buy one."
Yeah, well.
Do our part.
Yeah. Clay, you go.
A slight alteration off of what I said earlier, we could invite the county to come to the next council meeting, and invite the merchants that are impacted to come to that meeting also. And then if they're satisfactory answers, then the council could act, do the first reading next March 4th, and the second reading, and pass it on March 18th. And then I believe the Open Space and Ecology Committee is working on a recommendation with regards to the bags themselves.
Right, I mean, the Open Space and Ecology Committee's had a conversation about that.
I mean, the Open Space and Ecology Committee has had a conversation about that, and they are looking at taking on, within their budget, producing reusable bags with potentially the city logo on it as a, and then to provide that at the farmer's market and then also at other venues that it is able to provide bags. So I mean, the Open Space and Ecology Committee has met twice on this topic, once to support this ordinance, and then at their last meeting, they went through what makes a good reusable bag. And what they find is one that can be carried on the person, actually, more so than just left in your car. So that's kind of what they're looking at, is trying to figure out, how do they do that? The challenge is to do it in a way that we're not using more resources to transport the bags here than it takes. Also, the Open Space and Ecology Committee, in either the upcoming newsletter or the newsletter after that, is providing a simple pattern or simple instructions for how to create reusable bags out of used pants. So I mean, the Open Space and Ecology Committee is trying to figure out this idea as well as to how do you encourage people? So, I mean, there's just a number of these. I mean, the Open Space and Ecology Committee is looking at this, and they're also looking at some of the next steps beyond this as well at their meetings.
So I think it does make sense to have at least a meeting delay so that we can have the county people here. And I think, but in the meantime, they should be informed as to the kinds of questions we have, because I think the questions are, you know, so how does it affect Midtown? How does it affect the hardware store? How's it affect Julie's? I mean, you know, how do you translate this ordinance language into impact in a particular store? And actually, as I was reading through this, it seemed to me that the most onerous problem was the record-keeping. And I'd like to know, you know, do they really have the capacity to keep the kind of records that are being called for here? And that's a question that I have, that I don't know that we have an answer to. There's a lot of specific record-keeping that's required here.
From, it seemed to me that the only record-keeping for the bag sales is they have to keep a separate record that they sold bag, bag, bag as they bring it in. They would need to keep that record for the bags sold at 10 cents.
For three years, they have to keep those records, it says here. And, you know, that's a lot of record-keeping for a small, little store. So I'd kind of like to know, you know, what's the reality of that? For someone who has a computerized system, I mean, that's, you know, nothing. But I'm not sure any of our stores do. So that's kind of another question, just to find out, based on Clark's concerns, you know, what kind of implementation reality are we looking at here?
I think that all our businesses have a cash register that has button ABCD, which is for food or liquor, you know, taxed or untaxed buttons. And there's also an extra button that is for whatever special classification that they want to put it for. So it's a matter of training your staff to click.
My concern is not that you can have a separate item on the cash register. My concern is, you know, what kind of record-keeping do they do for three years? That's my concern.
Well, all of the business records have to be kept for more than three years, not just the bags.
Yeah, but I mean, this particular kind of, this is an additional kind of thing.
Well, I'll tell you what, as a small business owner, who this does affect in a dramatic way, in a dramatic way, you know? And that's why I'm a little bit hot about it, too, because I didn't get an opportunity to be able to speak and educate a city council on one of their businesses in town. And so I'm a little bit sensitive about that with our businesses, and we got four of them, like I said. And to me, this is goofy, the way it applies to our businesses. To me, bringing the county here to a city council meeting isn't going to do jack, okay? I want the county to go to those businesses and educate them. Those are mom-and-pop shops. They're not Target. They're not having a public relations government person who goes to these meetings and is paid to do so. This is Julie, this is Mike, this is Mr. Chu, this is Billy. And I'm not even sure what effect it has on a bar restaurant, because it says 90% of its revenue from prepared food. Well, what if they serve drinks in the bar? And that's 20% of their business, and 80% is food. Well, you know, give me a shot in the bag. That doesn't work, right? I mean, it's, you know what I'm saying? I don't know how, how does that apply?
Food they can carry out. Food needs to be separated so that it's not contaminated. You can't walk out with a hamburger in your paws. And they're not going to, they won't let you reach in through the McDonald's window and get your hamburger without the protective wrapping.
And food restaurants, takeout food establishments, or any other business that receives 90% of its revenue from the sale of prepared food to be eaten on or off the premises. 90%.
But food is also separately excluded. Loose it, contaminated food.
I'd like to hear from the attorney on this. I really, I don't understand this, and I want clarity, because to me, it's kind of ambiguous. I'm reading it verbatim. "Exclude restaurants, takeout food establishments, or any other business that receives 90% of its revenue from the sale of prepared food to be eaten on or off the premises."
Yes, they're totally excluded.
I want to hear from the attorney. What does that mean?
You know, Clark.
No, no, I want to hear from, I'm asking this question. No, our attorney, our attorney. I'm asking this question to how.
I thought you were talking about the county attorney.
Our attorney. I don't understand this. That's a.
Yeah, now, I think you raised a question in terms of public eating establishment. That's part of the.
Can you put the microphone, Hal? Please, I'm sorry.
Well, it's part of the definition, as you see, a public eating establishment, and I'm trying to figure out where that phrase kicks in later.
Because the way I, the way I understand it, it says, you're only excluding a restaurant or eating takeout food establishment or any other business that you can prove that 90% of your sales is from prepared food. Period. That's the way I read it, and I don't know, and I.
Well, public eating establishment, you know, I'd have to look at this again, but it's, it pops up again in the next, or two sections down where it's excluded from the definition of retail establishment. I mean, this whole thing gets rather convoluted, but. Your first is saying that any retail establishment selling perishable or non-perishable goods is the definition of retail, but it excludes public eating establishment. So that's part of a broad exemption. The question I have, and I'd have to go back and look at the ordinance again, is, all right, once you've excluded public eating establishments, what else is excluded under any of the other exclusions here, such as bags without handles or something of that nature? It is not at all, you know, clear in terms of, or easily, you know, understandable when you go through it.
Well, that's my whole point, is, you know, how does this apply? And so if we're talking 90%, I mean, that's, that's what I mean, is, you know, business like, say, Julie's Deli and Liquors, you know, they have food to go, and then they have, you know, condiments, and then they have liquor sales, and so.
So you go down to the single-use carryout bag restriction, and it's applying generally to no retail establishment shall provide a single-use carryout bag to, you know, whatever. But then, from the definition, public eating establishment has been excluded from the definition of retail establishment. So those aren't subject to the restriction. Then the question is, well, if the public eating establishment is excluded, what other types of bags are excluded or exempt? Now, you know, Randy was just advised by the county guy that the paper bag, like the Ace Hardware thing, is exempt. I've been sitting here trying to find that.
I've never seen it eat in the ordinance.
Ace Hardware bags. It doesn't jump out at me, I have to confess, so, you know, it's.
It is if they're putting little screws. It's not if they're.
But it doesn't say. It says, it defines in here, one, to transport food, prepared food, produce, bulk food or meat from a department within the store to a point of sale.
Yes, those are.
Specific items. Or, two, to hold prescription medication dispensed from a pharmacy. Or, three, to segregate food or merchandise that could damage or contaminate other food or merchandise when placed together.
And I think segregate is the word there that would apply to not having to throw all your screws in one basket, because then you're segregating your contaminated things.
That's your interpretation, Terry. You've really got to be clear, right?
Yeah, it is my interpretation, and it does partially go with what I was explained to when I watched the OSEC county.
Okay, but I'm not getting that out of this.
I understand.
And I don't think Hal is either, you know what I mean?
Well, it says to segregate food or merchandise that could damage or contaminate other food or merchandise when placed together, if that's the one we're looking at. Now, if I walk out of Ace Hardware with 25 screws in a paper bag, which is in the same bag as my hammer and other things, I'm not.
They're not contaminating.
Contaminating. I don't have any food in the bag, so there's nothing to be contaminated.
No, but your screws get contaminated if you've got sixteenths and three-eighths.
That's a worlds collide.
You don't have to, we're getting down to the nuts.
We're getting down to the nuts.
They're saying, one piece of merchandise contaminated, another piece of merchandise, yeah.
And then also the hammer in the same bag.
So I find it easier to just keep all my screws loose, because that's where this seems to be going right now.
I think we all pretend we're in France and forget about the bags altogether.
Well, I, I'm not sure that we're going to get a consensus on, on passing this at this point. I would like to try to get a consensus on moving it forward to the next meeting.
Yeah.
And having some answers. And I think that that should be doable if we can get some.
I hope so.
Justification from the county and.
The county people, and also, as I said before, we need to have some advice as to how it actually affects our particular local businesses so that we can have a clear idea of what we're imposing on them. I think that's really what we're, we're looking at.
That's what I'm asking, is, it's the county health inspector who comes out, is going to be doing the enforcement in this.
Right.
That's who's going to do the enforcement. And they're the ones that come and they inspect the restaurants and say, okay, you know, what do you comply? Where you're not, you rate excellent or good or whatever, right? And they're the ones that's going to be enforced. Oh, so, okay, now, adding on to that, you dispense bags, you charge, da-da-da-da, whatever. Okay, our businesses need to talk to this county health inspector and know, how's mine apply? How's this ordinance going to apply to mine? Because that item F, to me, is a real key to a couple of the businesses, is public eating establishment. And, Hal, I'm still not clear on it, and it doesn't sound like you are either. It means a restaurant, takeout food establishment, or any other business that receives 90% or more of its revenue from the sale of prepared food to be eaten on or off the premises.
They have a blanket exemption from the definition of retail establishment. So I think if you're into that category, you're not subject to the ordinance. But then the question is, are there other exemptions that kick in if you're not a public eating establishment?
Well, here's, here's the problem with that, is a business that's multifaceted, such as Julie's Deli and Liquors, is they have, the majority of their business is probably food, okay? But is it 90%? I don't know. You know, what if it's not? Okay? To me, I read this and says, you know, yeah, 90%. You know what I mean? But.
But if I'm not a public eating establishment, I still might give someone a bag without handle to transport food, which I think would be separately exempt under paragraph J.
Well, I mean, if you're, if you're also a liquor store, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, that, you know, somebody buys alcohol other than beer, then it has to be transported in a bag, and they can't put it in their pocket or anything like that. And because you're a liquor store or you have that liquor designation, then you're going to have to buy a bag, unless you bring your own. I mean, these are things that really need to be clarified for our local business establishments. And these county guys need to come down here and go to their businesses and explain it to them, how this ordinance is going to impact them. And that's what I'm asking, is these guys from the county, Mr. Health Inspector, Dean Peterson comes up here once in a while anyway, but I don't expect Dean to come up, but he's got health inspectors that are assigned all over that come to these businesses except for the hardware store anyway. So I think it's a reasonable request to not have our businesses come to a council meeting and listen to a dog and pony show. Have them guys go to the businesses and explain how this ordinance is going to impact their business and explain it to them. Educate them.
Mr. Miller, I was wondering if I could offer maybe a slightly different expectation for the council? I hear very clearly that we'd like to have, as a minimum, these four businesses have an opportunity to talk with the county. And I think that if the county were just to appear before the council, they're not going to be able to answer the council's questions about, how does that apply to Julie's? Because they won't know Julie's. So what I'd like to try and do, if it meets the council's pleasure, is, on the same day, perhaps, of the next council meeting, in advance of the meeting, say at 4:30, 5 o'clock, ask someone from County Environmental Health to come and to have a meeting, and specifically invite these four businesses, and also to ask the chamber to put out their notice that, hey, we're going to be here for an hour to explain this ordinance, and you can come in and ask your specific questions. Ask that person from Environmental Health to stay over for the council meeting to answer any of council's questions. And also, and I want to do it at that day as well, because then that way, if those business owners have concerns that are not satisfied that they'd like to address with you, they've already had the opportunity to talk with that health inspector, and then perhaps you'll get a little bit better interplay going on where they can say, okay, look, we were briefed, we listened to this, we really don't like this, or, yeah, we're fine with it, or something in between those two.
Yeah. You know, Clark, we, in our council meetings, you know, we have exchanges with, you know, folks from the audience. I mean, that's not the protocol for most cities, but it seems to be kind of a tradition for us. And I think what Randy has recommended, you know, gives our merchants that opportunity. If they didn't, if they weren't satisfied with the meeting that they would have with the county, they could, you know, they could collaborate with us, we could, you know, advocate on their behalf.
All right, I hear that, but, you know, maybe we should talk to the merchants first before we talk to the county. They're paid bureaucrats, and they will be able to send somebody here. They got, like, what, 15 health inspectors in the county? Something like that? There's a lot. There's quite a few. I think there's one assigned to almost every city. And in that case, we need to find out what the schedule of these four independent small business owners, how we can get them together.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Well, hopefully, if this meeting works.
Is, that may not, that may not work for them. And so I would like to do an outreach tomorrow to them and talk with them about this. Really, because, I mean, it took me an hour today, just an hour, to go and find out about how their business works, how it functions, what's going on. And that was, you know, because I wanted to understand it.
Sure.
You know, this is confusing to me, because I understand my business, I'm kind of in the same thing, same boat. And I got a multifaceted business, you know, and pounded. And pounded daily city council members over it, you know what? And they didn't understand it.
Hmm. Yeah, for sure.
Didn't understand, but they passed.
But they passed the exact same ordinance.
You know how I found out? I found out by, uh, this letter from San Mateo County Health System, that, oh yeah, the Daily City City Council does, and here's your fines, $100, $200, $300, you know? And I'll tell you what, when you run on a very thin profit margin, this stuff affects your business in a big way. Because certain things, you know, that you do, and all of a sudden, ch-ch-ch, and mine, I mean, what it does is, uh, containers, that your costs go, increase 100% on food containers. That's a, that's a significant amount. You start passing your cost on, where your competitor may not have that, may have an eat-in establishment, so you're now at a competitive disadvantage. And that's exactly what it does. And if you don't understand your businesses in your town, you just screwed your businesses.
Mm-hmm.
And you know what? And then we wonder why we don't have any businesses here. Little small mom and pops, oh, let's open a small, mom and pops, I know, the heck with them big, big box retail stores, you know? They're business killers. Well, they are business killers. But we do stuff like this, we make sure we kill them. If they don't understand what we're doing, right?
No, no, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, you're a business, and you understand that. And so that's what we really need to look at, you know? And I, I certainly understand it and the, the spirit of it, but like Clay says, the devil's always in the details.
Yeah.
And we're getting into these details, we're not understanding this either.
Right. Yeah, but you, you know, Clark, I mean, there are always going to be so many different variables, man. I mean, you cannot put every single thing into an ordinance. It will always give you that one little thing here and a little thing there, but you try to do your best.
And I think the spirit of this ordinance was to go after the big corporations, to have those public, paid, government relations people. We got small mom and pop shops, and I'm saying that's what the difference is. We're not the big, big users or abusers, because this town here, people in this town, the majority of them are very conscientious.
Yeah. And we also have, you know, boy, we haven't talked about, that's her point, and there's another one. But you, Randy put forth, I think, a pretty good option for us. If all the merchants can make it, make it-
Well, that, that we have to find out first, because, I mean, that's, that's the outreach that they want to do.
Yeah.
That requires any staff time. And, you know, that, really, we have to do. It took, like I said, an hour of my time. You call County Yodeho up here, and they take them two hours to explain, or three hours to explain each business. That's their job. That is their job.
So what do, what do you think, Clark?
So you know what I'm saying, is bring them up here and talk to the businesses. No, not an hour before the meeting. Get the county health inspector, who's going to be enforcement, who knows those business owners, go talk to them, take this ordinance, and then explain it to them. And then come explain it to us.
Yeah, I know. You know what I mean?
Right, you know what I'm saying? I, I'm not against it, but you, you get where I'm going, okay? It's, this is, this is the detail-
I know.
-that needs to be understood, and so-
Maybe, maybe just for efficiency, if we could have, because we don't have that many, if they can all come to one place, and the guy can do one, one spiel at one time, and then, you know, and here's the benefit that, that I think that would be good for doing it that way, is that, say, the person at Julie's, you, uh, asks a question that might not have been asked by Billy. You know, he, he wouldn't have asked that question, but now the person at Julie's asked that question, and then Billy asks a question that maybe the person at Silver Point Lumber didn't ask. And so now you have this collaboration of all these different questions that are being asked, that I think make the, the answer process better.
I hear what you're saying, Cliff, and I agree in, in theory, but, you know, like I said, a lot of, you look at Mike Carroll, he's like, sometimes a one-man band. You know what I mean? That, that he's got to be there when he's running it. You, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Is to do it, and the county health inspectors who are going to be enforcement, already go to the majority of these four businesses anyway, with the exception of maybe the hardware store, to do the health and safety inspections, so they know the business owners, so they can come and do outreach education. That is part of their job. They do it anyway, every three months. So, come on up. It's that simple.
So, why don't we ask the staff to, to work on this, to see, you know, what's feasible? Because there are a number of different models, and, you know, the suggestion you make, Randy, might work, but it might turn out that the four can't come all at that time. And it's also the case that these health inspectors, you know, they got a lot to do too, so they have schedules, and so all of this needs to be worked out. So I think, I think you certainly understand the concerns, and Clark, I think, has articulated them pretty well. And I guess we just need to figure out how the best to handle it, to get ourselves better informed, so that we know what we're passing, and that when we do that, that we're comfortable that we know that the, the local businesses understand it and are, you know, able to implement it in ways that's fit within their, with their, with their business practices. Because we certainly don't want to, you know, do, you know, significant harm to them. On the other hand, I think we would all agree that the more plastic bags we can get out of the environment, the better off we are. It's just, it's, it's just too bad that the way this damn thing is written, it's so difficult. Um, and I think Clark is right, that, that, you know, it wasn't, it was aimed at larger establishments, they didn't really think about the little guys at all. But, but we do, because those are the ones that are our small business owners, and they, they provide the services to us, so we certainly don't want to harm them in any way if we can, you know, do the best kind of due diligence that Clark is asking for.
You're sorry, I think I understand. I think we very, very clearly highlighted the advantages and disadvantages of going into a, to a larger countywide program. We've lost some of the specificity, I think, that, that people expect in Brisbane, Brisbane. But just so I'm clear on, on the council's interpretation, so before I would bring this back to the council, you would like me to have someone from Environmental Health either meet with each of these, perhaps in a group, perhaps individually, or at least have offered them that? I'm just worrying, because we'll reach out to everybody, but unless somebody says, well, I could only meet at 2:00 AM on the third blue moon, we'll make reasonable efforts to make people available, and, and after that, then we'll schedule, um, Environmental Health to come the next time we bring this to the council, is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, you know, Clark, I mean, just, uh, just for efficiency, and I hear you saying about, you know, these, these inspectors, and they do their, you know, there's a lot of them, and, and I don't know what their schedules are like. But I, you know, I mean, I, I, I think that we could better utilize that person's time if, if it's in a group setting, rather than, than the individual shops. I mean, just, I don't know, it just goes against the grain for me, is, is, you know, trying to be efficient as a government person, or a business person, or in my own household. I mean, you know, if you can get folks together, and I think you'll have a better meeting, and I think there'll be greater understanding, and, um, but if you can't get it, if you, if there's some folks that can't make it, then, yeah, let's, uh, you know, have a separate meeting with inspectors, so that we make sure that we cover all of, all of our merchants, because we don't have that many of them.
Well, I think we'll let staff work out the logistics of it, on how it, how it turns out.
Okay, good. So, really, you're cool.
I'm saying, yeah, I'm saying I'm open yet, but then Hal's saying, let's be consistent with our communication. And we're wanting to send a letter to somebody, you know, that, hey, this may affect you, this is going to affect these people, and so you really want to do your best communication on this.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean? And that's what I'm talking about, consistency. So, reach out to them. The county is just going to be doing enforcement, and so that's part of their job, but it's also, you know, they need to come up and educate the people, so we want to accommodate our business owners and get them aboard on us and understand, so that our citizens understand, the businesses understand, and we understand. Because right now, it's still a little bit convoluted. I'm still not clear on stuff, you know?
I think it's very possible that, um, with some clarification, it may be that it's a very simple explanation to each of these businesses, where, you know, Julie's may be totally exempt, and that's the answer she gets. Um, or not. And so I don't think that necessarily, um, a face-to-face meeting with the health inspector is going to be needed to explain how this affects fresh produce in the market or fresh meat in the market. Those are going to be fairly self-explanatory and be able to be reasonably assimilated into the, the ideas. So it, it may not need to be a personal meet with each business owner, depending on how the city, the, the county explains this, and, and has an explanation for the particular type of businesses they do. So I think that the level of explanation can be fluid.
Honestly, I'd like to see if, how they understand it. I really would. You know what I mean? Because, like I said, those details, Terry, I, I understand your point, but the way this is written is so ambiguous, and it's kind of convoluted to me. Say, well, you know, it doesn't apply. Well, where does it say that exactly? You know what I mean? And, okay, if it doesn't apply to my business, give me a letter. Because, you know, your health inspectors may change, and it makes it like, um, for a police officer to interpret the law. This is the spirit of the law. Well, it can be interpreted different ways. That's what lawyers are for, right? That's why you got lawsuits and stuff like that, is, is it may be interpreted differently, and you might come, because somebody comes in and says, well, that's not what I read here. It's new and whatever, well, that's not what the other guy said, he says I'm exempt. I mean, I could share with you some of the stuff I got from, from Daily City, and it's like, whoa. You know what I mean? It's like, well, how does that apply? You know what I mean? It doesn't say that here. You know, you know what I mean? And that, and that's, and that's the part that really needs to be, and, uh, like I said, I'm, I'm more sensitive to this than probably the rest of you, because this affects me too, you know? You know, I've been affected by it. When you do, you kind of start looking at, well, how does it affect another guy? And you, you know, and you try and do that, I think, as a city council person, right? That we, you know, we try and be sensitive about, how does this affect us? And we're doing an ordinance, see, I mean, this, this becomes the law. And so we really need to understand it. I mean, you can change the whole course of things, you know, people are, and I talk with the merchants, you know, and then people can get, get mad, you know, I'm not paying $10 for a bag. Think there's anybody in Brisbane that would say that? I can name 100.
Yeah, and they're, they're going to be asked at every place they shop?
Well, I know, I know, but it's, it's just that initial, the initial impact, but, you know, we've had generations severed because of initial impacts, you know? And that's, that's the sad part. Things like that happen, you know? So my part is, is to really do what I call a very intrinsic reach out, that some sisters, the counties, have them come up here and explain it, period. And let the staff work out the logistics of how it is, but we got to reach out to the business owners, and I want every one of them. And I, and like I said, you know, I, I never did get an answer on a restaurant bar establishment. That needs to be clarified too. Because if that's not clarified, then you need to reach out to those businesses. And that, and that's pertaining to that 90% rule I'm talking about.
Okay, so, is it reasonably clear what we would like you all to do?
Crystal, sir. And, and I was wondering if I could respectfully request of the mayor to consider asking one of your colleagues to get a motion to continue this next meeting, that way we can avoid having to put out somewhat confusing re-noticing of the public hearing meetings?
So you want to continue the public hearing?
Just continue this item to the next. Is it public hearing on this item?
Is it? That's what I'm asking.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting advice from-
It is a public hearing, so-
I'm coming to the motion to continue the public hearing to our next meeting.
Yeah.
Well, we closed the public hearing, technically.
Yeah, so we have to open it and then continue it, right?
To the realm.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Attorney.
Can't we just reopen it then?
You can reopen it.
Let's reopen it.
You're going to have to test it.
Right.
Oh, it's reopened.
Reopen it, okay. So, so we continue the, this-
I'll continue the matter to the next hearing.
To the next meeting, uh, with the possibility of opening the public hearing. Okay?
There's my motion.
All right, second?
Second.
On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, the problem is, it's getting kind of late. And so the question to my colleagues is, do you, do we want to try to complete all the agenda? There are at least two things that we really should do, because of timing. We really should approve the November election, because we have to do that before the 27th, and we should, need to do the city selection committee, because that's this Friday.
Yes.
So at least those two things. What about the other items? You want to postpone, postpone them, or try to make it through and stay here for a while?
Well, I think we should, well, does anyone need to take a break?
Depends what we're going through.
Yeah, it depends on whether we're going to do everything, or-
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to extend the meeting for another half an hour.
Okay.
Okay.
And then I would suggest that we postpone anything that's not, um, that we need to, like, subcommittee reports we can put off, if we could remember that long.
Okay, I'll, I'll move to extend the meet, or second, extend the meeting for half an hour.
And focusing on those two items that have time certain.
But, you know, if we, if we can nail it within, I mean, you know, we nail these two things-
If we can nail them quick, then we could do some other things.
Yes.
Okay. On favor, most, please say aye.
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 Okay. Jerry, your-
Honorable Mayor and City Council, before you tonight is a resolution to call the election for November 5th, 2013. We generally adopt this resolution in June of a number of years to hold, to fill council seats. This year, we're doing it earlier because we have the vacancy, because Sepie's retirement. And so by adopting this resolution this evening, you're fulfilling your requirement to call an election within 60 days of the, of her resignation. There is one correction to the resolution that Mayor Miller pointed out today. It should, in one of the warehouses, I put it in front of you, it should say to fill three council seats rather than two. Do you all have that in front of you? There's a correction. And just, I don't know if there's any members of the public even listening at this, at this time, but, um, in order to run for city council, nomination packets will be available in my office from July 15th of this year to August 9th. And I've had a lot of inquiries recently because of the council vacancy, so I know there's a lot of people interested in running, or at least in filling that seat. And so I just wanted, um, we'll be running articles in the city news, letting people know that there will be three seats up, and that they cannot come and take out papers any earlier than July 15th. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, Clark?
I have one, because, because, um, one seat is vacated, then then extend the time to be able to take papers out?
It, that does, for, for that seat. Now, you know, how-
These are seats at large, though.
Yeah, so if, I forget how the election code section reads. If an incumbent doesn't take out nomination papers, it extends it for another week. So if we have one, but the other two do, like, and I have to read the elections code section to be clear on that now. Do you recall?
You get into an interesting issue as to whether the person is an incumbent or not. And I think I would check with the registrar on that issue, because I think what they will say is, because she resigned before the term was up, or the filing, that she's not an incumbent, so you don't get the extra time. I ran into exactly the same issue for a sanitary district I represent, and one of the board members resigned, and the term was normally up, and then somebody, in fact, he resigned the- And then somebody, in fact, he resigned between, after, after the deadline. And they said, "Well, you don't extend the time because he's not an incumbent." So I think we need to check on that. I wouldn't jump to the conclusion you have an extra period of time. I don't think you do.
Yeah, I would, I wanted to read that too again, but I'll let you know. I'll look into it and give you an answer on that.
So can we adopt it tonight, though?
Well, yeah, it's going to...
The resolution's fine.
Expect the resolution to call the election. Yeah.
No one has any more questions? I'll make a motion to adopt resolution.
Second.
Two thirteen dash and three.
Through the discussion?
No.
Okay. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Resolution three of this year.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Okay, so you want to go to the city selection committee situation? So we have, are you going, Ray? City selection committee, which is under mayor council matters.
Ten A. Are you going to the...
Am I personally going?
Yeah.
I was planning on it, yes.
Okay, okay, good.
Yeah, I'll be there as well.
Yeah, I'm going to be going also.
Okay. So there are a lot of decisions that need to be made. And so the first is the appointment to the A-BAG Association of Bay Area Governments. And there are two people who have expressed an interest at this point. And that's Mayor Pedro Gonzalez of South San Francisco and council member Wayne Lee of Millbrae. What's your preference, sir? How you instruct me to vote?
I know Wayne has done an outreach.
He gave you a call?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this certainly has a lot of background in a wide, wide swath to deal with. I don't know if he was here tonight. I don't know if that was Wayne or not, but...
Wayne wasn't here.
Oh, he wasn't, yeah. So...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know Wayne Lee. I've only met the mayor of South San Francisco once. But we also have to think about relations with various cities too, I guess, because you've got two South San Francisco people, one running for the A-BAG and another running for LAFCO. And supposed to, should vote for at least one of them.
And two Millbrae people.
Yeah, right.
Running for the same two seats.
Right, exactly. So I don't know how you think...
You want to try to split the vote?
Well...
Well, Pedro is the...
If it makes sense to do so, but I don't really know the people, so I'm waiting on your advice.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've met Wayne at several meetings. I mean, he seems to be a pretty sharp guy, you know? But I also know Pedro, he's from South San Francisco. I served with him on, at, on the Hart Board. You know, and he is the alternate representative to A-BAG. He's the, that's what it says in his letter. I don't know if he's the alternate for the council of cities.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I mean...
I think Nadia would be a, just, I think, I think Nadia would be a good pick for the LAFCO position.
I do too.
Right, so if, maybe we give it to Pedro for...
If, if we're going to go from Ray's rationale?
Well, I think it was...
Well, no, he suggested I just use the term split the vote. And, and that's...
So...
Whatever you feel would be most effective.
I mean, that's, that's, that's a real, I don't know how effective it'd be. That's a real political maneuver for doing it, but really, they got representation up in Sacramento, direct representation.
South City does?
Yeah.
Yeah, Richard Green, all the California cities.
Huh?
You think about Richard Green here?
Well, I'm talking about Kevin Mullin.
Oh, and Mullin, yeah, yeah, I know, you're right, yeah.
Yeah, he was selected to the assembly.
No, I was just thinking about, you know, the relations with our neighboring city.
Well, Pedro did say one time he thought that South City should annex Brisbane.
He said that?
Yeah. In the newspaper.
All right, you want to have the team of Millbrae people in?
Team Millbrae.
Have yourself a fire.
You know, that would give you a stronger alliance.
So what's your pleasure?
I'm okay with doing it that way.
Which way?
Well, using your terms, split the vote.
To Pedro and for A-BAG and then...
But, you know, I...
Or you think Wayne would be a better person? You know, and just go...
I actually do.
Well, if it's a better person, I think that's where we should go.
All right, then Wayne Lee.
All right.
Okay, so you want to give me a motion?
No, we don't have to do anything on the other one.
No, just for the first one, A-BAG.
Oh, um, I don't think we need to moan, we need to motion this. This is just council...
Just give you a choice to...
Well, I just thought it would be for the record, so then, you know, if the...
Okay, here, here, here it is. Wayne is one, Pedro's two.
Okay.
So if, if...
Case of third person.
And you use...
I'll second that.
Ray, you can use your judgment.
If somebody else comes up.
If it comes down to a 10 to 10 split, how, whatever you want to do. Does that sound reasonable?
Okay.
Let the mayor use his, his judgment.
Okay.
You don't have to do anything about heart, there's four people there.
Okay, so as long as, assuming nobody else shows up.
Yeah, you got to watch out about him.
I'd say all four, okay.
Okay.
I think Nadia would be a better choice.
I do too.
I agree.
All right.
Okay. And then we got the transportation authority.
Helen.
Well, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to agree with that too, with Helen.
Helen?
Kind of funny, I talked to one of the other council members in Daly City and said, "Hey, you know, your colleague is so, is applying for the TA." He goes, "He is?" "Why aren't you guys supporting him?" He goes, "I don't know, he is." It's kind of interesting, you didn't really know. So the local...
Daly City has some interesting dynamics.
Huh?
They said they have some interesting dynamics in Daly City. But I think, I think Helen would be a good...
Well, Helen's been on there a long time too, so she knows her, her way around, so I would, you know, bless you.
Really? You comfortable there? With Helen? Yeah?
I, I actually know David probably more than I know Helen, but...
I know them both pretty well.
Yeah, I do.
But I'm, I'm happy to go along and make it a consensus for Helen.
Okay, yeah. I've known Helen for a long time. I actually knew her when I was previously on the council. So I've known her for a long time. I have met David Kenica.
Yeah, no, I like David a lot too.
Smart, young guy. And his letter is actually, I think, a much better letter.
He's going to be going places, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
He's got political aspirations.
Ambition.
We're not going, we're not going to stop him by, by not supporting this. He'll, he'll find another way.
I think John deserves this one.
Yeah, and she, she tied Seppi, but it was a year ago. And then when, during the runoff, Seppi, Seppi got the extra vote and beat Helen by, by one. So, all right.
Okay, so we decided all that.
Good.
So we've still got 15 minutes.
Doing good.
All right. So we move to...
Please, Mayor Manager.
So in the, I know it's getting late, so I think the, Cliff and I have a meeting on the airport roundtable later this week, so I think I'll just put that off until the March 4th meeting.
Excuse me.
We'll have much more to talk about at that point. There's nothing really timely in terms of the meeting with Jerry Hill, but the one thing I did want to make a public announcement on was that the Caltrain is going to be doing a workshop here in the council chambers on March 20th from 6:00 to 7:30. And that has to do with the SSP outreach, which basically the Route 292 bus issue for us. And, but they will also be announcing their revised final draft, I believe, on about a week prior to that, or actually, it might be a little bit more than that.
You're talking about Sam Trans?
Yes, Sam Trans.
I'm sorry, Sam Trans.
Sam Trans, I say Caltrain.
He did say Caltrain.
I did say Caltrain, I'm sorry. The Sam Trans, excuse me. So the, the revised report will be out and we'll, we'll know what the recommendation is with regards to Route 292. But they'll also be having a public workshop here in Brisbane on the 20th of March. John is here, and I think probably the thing that's more timely and a bigger issue is the, the status on the Brisbane draft environmental impact report. I'd like to have John just give you an update on that.
Again, we are in a reviewing of the admin draft process. We anticipate getting a completed version of the document, another version, second version, or third version, whatever you'd want to call it, in early March. So from there, it really is a matter of how many further iterations it's going to take to get to being ready for publication. I think the best case would be early April, but it could easily be another month beyond that, if, if there's iterations to the document required to, to, to get it to a point where it's ready to be published. So I apologize for the fluidity of it, but again, you really have to get the document to where it's ready to be published, as opposed to rushing it through. So that's, you know, my best estimate based on the work product I've seen to date.
Thank you, John.
There were a number of issues that were sort of holding the progress up. Have any of them been resolved? One of which had to do with what kind of recycling water system UPC was going to go with, and they were having trouble making up their minds, or whether to study both, or, so where is that?
I expect we're meeting with UPC tomorrow. I expect some resolution, some direction from them on what they want studied in regard to that, hopefully tomorrow. Then it's a matter of the time, it shouldn't be too extensive for the consultant to actually do that. I think that's, right now, if we can resolve that tomorrow, I think that will be reflected in the next iteration of the plan we see, the draft document we see in early March. And then the other issues are more, I think, technical in nature, that, are just men are being worked through on the consultant's side. I believe that's really the only one that's really sort of out there, waiting for the developer to, to give us more information to proceed.
Okay. Thank you.
And just a quick update on the citizens committee. They met on February 12th and selected a chairperson, which is Anyam Miller, and a vice chair, Greg Anderson. They talked about, Jessica Aloff made a statement at that meeting that she would be an observer of the group but not participate, and that she wouldn't participate in the subcommittees to review the different chapters. They, they looked at different approaches in forming subcommittees to, to review each chapter, so they made quite a bit of progress in that area. They set their next meeting for March 11th, and they did ask for council direction. It seems as though some members of the citizens committee are unable to continue to attend the meetings for various family reasons. And if a significant number starts to drop off, that they, they want of the council's direction of whether other people could join the committee at this date, even though they've held their first two meetings. So I don't know if you want to weigh in on that issue.
I would say yes. Because I think there's process, people don't know what they're stepping into, and the initial one's going to shake a lot of fleas off the dog when they find out that, oh my God, I didn't know it meant that. So I would say I'd be open to allowing other people to join in the process. Who do you think, Terry?
I think as long as the, the group is comfortable. I don't think it's something that it can't be somewhat fluid. And some people are going to have time, and since we still don't have a document to review, I could see it being sort of anticlimactic for people and saying, but they can either do it or not do it. So I think it's however the group's comfortable, and if they want to make that choice to add more people, that if they want to, they should be able to.
You agree?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's clear.
Okay, thank you.
Just, we got one last item. We had talked about the, the finding of a human skeletal remains in town a few weeks ago, and we've gotten some publicity on that. And so Commander Meisner can give you an update on that investigation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. As you know, on January 16th, we recovered skeletal human remains from a hillside here in Brisbane. Brisbane police personnel, as well as the Sematell County Crime Lab, Sematell County Coroner's Office, and the Sematell County DA's office participated in that recovery. And members from each one of those departments continues to take an active role in the investigation. Part of that investigation involved the use of a forensic anthropologist, and we've recently gotten some information about their best guess as far as age and, and height of the victim. And right now, we're looking at a female between the ages of 33 and 46, between 5'3" and 5'6" tall. And right now, the best guess is that the remains had been there for an excess of five That information is great, but it brings some tremendous challenges in trying to move forward with resolving what happened in this case. It's a 13-year time span for an age, and if we were able to say the person was deceased in 2005, we'd have a static window to look at, but we have a moving target. It could be five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years out as far as how long the remains have been there. So our goal right now is, we have extracted DNA. We're hoping that'll be, that'll provide an answer to our question of who the remains belong to. But the further that back that this death occurred reduces the likelihood that, that DNA is even was, be in the system or existed at the time. So we are looking at missing person records, trying to make a matchup. The coroner did release to the media that the person had a medical device attached to a bone. That may or may not yield any further information, but if we do get a shorter list of potential victims, that will, will help us identify the person. And that's our, our goal now. And once we identify the scene, then we'll be able to, to determine a direction for the investigation.
Do we have any missing persons in Brisbane over the last five to 30 years that...
We have no local cases that this would match up with.
And could the remains be older than that timeframe that you, that you said? I mean, could it be 50 years or 100 years?
No, I think we can exclude something that far out. There, there is some dental information that we have from the remains that, that will help us narrow it in on the long end. Certainly, we're able to rule out, you know, we occasionally, in the San Barbara Mountain area, there's Indian remains and such, but we're able to rule that out because of the evidence of dental work done as such. So, and I don't want to...
To define an outside window yet, that's not, I'm not getting indication from the
crime lab or the coroner's office that they're willing to do that at this point. They're only willing to say it's in excess of five years. But they, obviously, they've been there for some time. So we're not looking at, at a recent event, is what, what they're telling us. There's quite a bit of forensic material to examine, and they continue to do that at this time, to try... um, at this time, to try to get further clues to narrow that timeframe down.
So, so just the, so only the skull has been found, or other parts?
Uh, well, to go back in, in November, um, we, there was a call of a local subject who was in possession of what they believed to be a human skull, and indeed, that's what it turned out to be, and unfortunately, he didn't want to part with it and result in the injury of two officers.
Right.
And subsequently, though, we were able to recontact him. He did try to explain what happened, but the information he gave us wasn't, uh, specific enough for us to be able, we did search the areas that he suggested, and we weren't able to find anything during that time period. We were able to contact him again in January, where he was able to provide us an exact location. So we, at that point, were able to, to find the, the remainder of, of the skeletal remains.
So the intact skeletal remains?
I, I wouldn't define it as intact, but w- we recovered a significant amount of skeletal remains.
Was it buried, or?
Uh, you know, there's certain details I'm gonna have to not speak publicly about, those would be helpful for us when we start to, if we do end up having to talk to other people, but that'll be helpful us to, to vet, um, the truth. So, uh, he, um, it's been public, he's talked about that he found the skull, uh, open, in an open space, so, um, but other than that, I'm, be best not to comment on, on the condition of the remains when we found it.
Okay. Thank you.
You have a read on how long the, the forensic investigation will take before you have any results?
No, you know, I, we're all used to having it resolved in a sixty-minute timeframe on television, and I, even, you know, I think in this day and age, we expect things to go quite rapidly, um, but the reality is, and, and the DNA, um, it could take a matter of months before they're willing to come back with any results, so, um, it is quite a bit of, of material that was taken to the lab. Uh, I know they've gone through it, and they're, they're trying to make sense of that, and as we speak, so, um, that's all I can tell you at this point, is that we're actively working on that.
Okay, but it could be a couple of months.
Oh, yes.
Could be a couple of years.
Well-
It's piecing together a puzzle.
Yeah, right, okay, no, it's very useful information, and it's one of those items that's been discussed a lot on social media and the news forums and so forth, so it's good that we have a sense of, you know, what we know officially, anyway.
Right, right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So there's only really one other thing that would be quick, and that is that mayor, the letter from Mayor Lee from San Francisco, and I asked Hal if, if it was really even legal for us to consider doing something, uh, on this issue, which is a matter of controlling certain kinds of military types of ammunition.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to see whether there's preemption, but one thing that, that I would recommend is that this is only a proposal from San Francisco, and, um, it has not been adopted by them, they've asked other cities to look at it, but it, it seems to me, until they take action one way or the other, it might be premature for us to get too deeply involved in this, because it wouldn't make sense for Brisbane to adopt something different than San Francisco. The other thing that's a little misleading is, is model gun control legislation. It's really not controlling guns, it's only controlling certain types of ammunition.
Right.
And to my knowledge, there's nobody in town that's engaged in the sale of these products, so, um, I, I'm not sure it's helpful for us to spend a whole lot of time getting into this unless we feel there's some local application, or at least it's something that San Francisco has already vetted, has discussed in detail, and has come up with some sort of a, of an ordinance that they've adopted, and the question is whether it makes any sense to have some, some larger application of the same provisions, but I think it's, it'd be worse for us to adopt something and then they do something different. So I guess my recommendation of the council right now is, well, you know, we've got it, and we can note and file it and see what they do, and if they do take action, bring it back, and the council can determine whether there's any need for Brisbane to adopt something similar when there's no apparent establishment that's in need of regulation right now.
Okay. So I, I just was thinking that would probably be good neighborly relations to respond to his letter.
Yeah, I really don't know the answer as to whether, uh, general law city would have authority to start regulating products which presumably are legal to sell unless there's some state restrictions, so, uh, if there is that question, I would rather have, uh, San Francisco go fight it out with whoever they need to, to fight it with. I know they got people up there selling ammunition, and if there is a legal challenge, then they're the ones who really ought to bear the cost of that. I wouldn't want us adopting something and then have the NRA or somebody come along and sue the city, and we're left with the battle, and we don't even have any merchants selling the product.
Okay. The, outside of staff and the council, the, no one else here, so I suspect there'll be no oral communications, number two. Uh, so, uh, we will adjourn in memory of Tim Geiney, former public safety officer, and, uh, served Brisbane very well, quite an interesting obituary and a chronicle, I'm sure you saw. Um, and also, John Gilbrick, a longtime Brisbane resident and worked with his dad at the gas station, which no longer exists.
Sounds good.
So-
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Good discussion.
Yeah, well, what you should be doing, right?
Yeah.
So what do you think of our steering point design, that way?
But it is funny, huh? You kind of start delving into it and going, oh, all right.
I think I've got a lot of information, I think that's a suggestion.
You're a little bit different.
But Louise-